This meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in town hall and mailing to the officially designated newspaper. For a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday. January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two via Zoom webinar. Now, Rob will do the oath to Ashley.
So Ashley, you can hear me okay?
Yes, you could hear me as well.
Yes, absolutely. So if you would raise your right hand. And repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Ashley Abigdor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And then I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Alternative Number Two Board Member.
Perform all the duties of the Office of Zoning Board of Adjustment, Alternative Number Two Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ashley, and welcome aboard.
Excited to be here.
Now that's something.
Here. Jody Sharma.
Here.
Joseph Steinberg.
Ron Mute Joe.
He's here. You need to mute Joe.
Can you hear me now?
You're here.
Yes.
Here.
Steve Togger.
Here.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Here.
Shandru Hargani.
Here.
Ashley Abigdor.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad.
Here.
Chairman Craig Plutner.
Here. Okay, we'll start with our approval of the minutes for this evening for November first, twenty twenty one. Any corrections or changes to those minutes? Who's eligible to vote on this?
Craig, Jody, Steve, Wolfgang, Amy, Shandru, Jessica, Joe.
Okay, so may I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Move approval of the minutes of eleven, one, twenty one.
Steve on the second, all in favor? Do you want to do a roll call on that?
No, you can just read.
You can do it.
But. Next up, we have one, two, six memorializations. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be starting with calendar thirty eight, sixteen, twenty one, Amid Sangari, ninety, Under Cliff Road in Melbourne. Any changes or corrections to that memorialization?
Give me one second because I just noticed, let me just make sure the application number is right.
That's an old number.
Yeah, I just noticed on page. On the first page, it's listed as thirty eight, twenty five dash twenty one. In, in the title, and then in the first and second paragraphs, but it's actually. Thirty eight, sixteen.
I have it as thirty eight, sixteen in my notes.
Yeah, it is thirty eight, sixteen, so definitely.
Eileen, if you would make that administrative change.
Yep.
Thank you.
To vote on this are Craig, Jody, Steve, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe.
If there are no corrections or changes, can I have a motion to approve?
Move approval calendar thirty eight, sixteen, twenty one.
A second.
Second.
Wolfgang on the second.
Craig Plutner.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Steve Togger.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Next up, we have calendar thirty eight, thirty six, twenty one, Dapper Dad LLC, thirty five Sinclair Terrace, Short Hills. Any corrections or changes on that memorialization?
Mr. Chairman, just to remind the board, I sent out a revision earlier this afternoon. Based on the fact that originally the application was brought needing a combined side yard setback variance. And it was determined through the board's proceeding that that was not necessary. So I removed that from the consideration of the resolution.
Yeah, due to the corner a lot. Okay. Other than that, any other changes that we need to note? If not, can I have a motion to adopt that memorialization?
Craig, Steve, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe.
Move approval calendar thirty eight, twenty dash twenty one.
In a second.
Second.
Jessica.
Craig Plutner.
Yes.
Steve Togger.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Shandru Hargani.
Yes.
Next up, we have calendar thirty eight, thirty eight, twenty one, Jeffrey Rosen, twenty one Dryden Terrace in Short Hills. Any changes or corrections to that memorialization? If not, can I have a motion to adopt?
I move adoption of memorialization for thirty eight, thirty eight dash twenty one.
A second.
Second.
Craig Plutner.
Yes.
Steve Togger.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Shandru Hargani.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Next up, we have calendar thirty eight, thirty nine, twenty one, Marion Paul Grossman, thirty two Haddonfield Road in Short Hills. Any changes or corrections to that memorialization? If not, a motion to adopt.
Who's eligible on this one?
Craig, Steve, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe, Shandru.
I move adoption of the memorialization, memorializing resolution for calendar number thirty eight, thirty nine dash twenty one.
A second.
Second.
Craig Plutner.
Yes.
Steve Togger.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Shandru Hargani.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Next and lastly, calendar thirty eight, forty, twenty one, Gina and Joseph Smith, sixty Milton Street in Melbourne. Any changes or corrections to that memorialization?
Mr. Chairman, Wolfgang correctly pointed out that I had spelled Mr. Classy's wrong, name wrong in a couple of places. So Eileen, if you would make that, those changes, please.
Thank you, Rob. And who's eligible?
Craig, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe, Shandru.
One of those individuals like to make a motion?
Move approval calendar thirty eight, forty dash twenty one.
In a second.
I can second.
Shandru on the second. Oh, roll call.
Craig Plutner.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Shandru Hargani.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Um Craig, we can also have Owa Lobi, which was.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I missed that. Did I miss that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so calendar thirty eight, thirty one, twenty one, Williams, Owa Lobi, forty six Maple Street in Melbourne. Any changes or corrections to that memorialization?
Eligible are Craig, Jody, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe.
Motion to adopt that?
Move approval for calendar thirty eight, thirty one dash twenty one.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Wolfgang.
Craig Plutner.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Okay, we'll be moving on to our applications. Kicking off this evening of five applications, we are starting with calendar thirty eight, forty one, twenty one. It is Cliff Chu and Catherine Ryder of Nine South Mountain Road.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you folks tonight?
Good. I just want to thank the Buildings Department for waiting through our paperwork and the board for their service to the town. I'm Kate Ryder and this is Cliff Chu. We live in the South Mountain section. We moved in in two thousand and eleven when we had.
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay, sorry.
Let's wait.
Right.
Sure. And we have your architect as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
So before we get started, why don't we have the applicants as well as the architect, Ms. Lee, get sworn, please? Phil, can you do that?
Yeah, raise your right hand, please. Spirit, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, no matter now pending.
We do. I do.
Yes. Okay, do you want them to state their names?
One at a time to state your name and address, please.
Kathleen Ryder, Nine South Mountain Road, Melbourne, New Jersey.
Clifford Chu, Nine South Mountain Road, Melbourne, New Jersey.
Ying Li, Architect, eighty nine Pine Street, Melbourne, New Jersey.
Ms. Lee, will you please indulge the board with your qualifications?
I'm licensed in architect in New York and New Jersey. And the license is good in good standing. I have presented in front of the board for a number of times.
Thank you.
Ms. Lee, you've been qualified as an expert witness in the field of architecture before this board as well as other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you. Your qualifications are accepted, so. You may proceed.
Catherine, do you want to make an intro?
Sure. So we moved here in two thousand and eleven when we had one son about ten years ago. And now we have two boys, ages nine and eleven. We're seeking approval of the variances that we applied for, for the first floor to add a family, a family room. It's just going to include the first floor only. We made a conscious effort not to include the second or the third floors. Like many of our neighbors have done. The house is about sixteen hundred square feet. And it's just too small for our family. We, we had a couch in our living room that didn't fit us and we tried to buy a new couch, but now the new couch is too big for the room. You know, we have an apartment fridge in our kitchen. That's all it would fit. We, we had to replace it and we found. The same refrigerator we had in our one bedroom apartment when we moved here. So we're just seeking to modernize the house so that we could cook and feed. A family of four and have some family over and places to sit other than, you know, pull up stools for our elder relatives. We really love our neighbors, our neighborhood and this town, so we're just seeking to expand a little so that we can live comfortably here. So I just want to thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, I will take over for the technical part. We do have five variances and the lot is. It's on the narrow lot. It has a lot width of fifty feet instead of sixty. That's the minimum required a lot. And the main thing about this property is. I think many of the, three of the variances arise from the. Basically, the existence of oversized, the two car detached garage in the back. It is about twenty four by twenty three, which adds to five hundred and fifty one square foot. That basically take the big chunk of the building coverage and lot coverage. And consequently, the driveway, the two car driveway that leads to the garage also. Basically counted a big portion of the lot coverage and the rear yard occupied. So I would say out of the five. If I'm looking at attachment F, basically is the zoning calculation form on the page two. The five variances are highlighted in yellow. The number one, two, three, and the five, they are. All driven by the garage, oversized garage and the driveway. The number four is the one that related to the deck. That is the result of the peculiar location of the house on the lot somehow. It's basically, it's located very much to the right with minimum like seven feet. Driveway. Where's that? Two car garage, the driveway. That, that is the variance I tried very hard to avoid, but the deck is already at a minimum. Size. So that is the variance that is caused by the location, particular location of the house. That is very much to the. To the right side of the property. The, the rest of the four variances. Are the consequence of the garage and the driveway. The percentage, they might look high, but if you look at the absolute number. They are really adding only three hundred and seventy five square foot. And we talked about, it is a conscious decision to, to, to basically. Do a one story addition instead of two. That would be quite imposing on the, to the backyard. With that, basically we avoid the very likely FAR. So we are seeking or. We avoid the D variances. We are seeking the variances and four of them are driven by the. Existing condition, basically existence of the, the two car garage. The absolute number is small and. Even though the percentage is, some of the percentage, like the nine percent deviation is high. But when you look at it, what we're adding in terms of deck. Or the building. They are in small number. And with, with, this is a house that started with a basic square, like twenty four by thirty square footprint. It doesn't fit the lifestyle of Kate and the cliff with her two kids, but it's not going to fit the lifestyle of any family. So in a way, there's no other way to do an addition without triggering all those variances. My approach for lot and the house like that is almost, I have to do it from inside out. I go with the minimum dimension to go around a kitchen, minimum dimension to use the deck. And the minimum dimension that's ergonomically possible. And then that's what I get. So in a way, I feel it's, it's the minimum. And then we, we try our best to keep everything minimum.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Do any board members have questions for this?
Yes, I do. I do. So you just testified that. That the, I guess the reason for many of these. Variances requested is the driveway and the oversized garage. And I, I would like to understand, did you consider other alternatives for the garage perhaps?
Yes, I guess they can. Economically, yes, I guess one option I mentioned that. Chop that in half, that is an option, but I think that's, that's basically an hardship that imposed on the homeowners. I don't know how viable is that. Basically, you chop the, you, you literally have to tear it down to build, build a new one and then. I would think that. Versus, they, they are already going to put in some, quite some investment in addition. I mean, actually, the first thing we chopped off is the second story addition. If I say the second floor is functioning, I, I, I felt it was. The yard is a small with that garage. So basically, we, that, that is the thing we took off. We say if, 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 let's do the, let's prioritize if the. The most important thing is the kitchen. If you can live with the second floor the way it is, then let's just do the kitchen and have a space that. For the family to hand out. That's the effort we made. Or the other, yes, reduce the size of the garage. I, I think it would just be difficult for the homeowners. Even though it will help with the numbers.
You muted?
No, I, I thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm done with my questions. Thanks.
I'm sorry. You're muted, Steve.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So essentially, the addition as planned. Takes up the space of the existing deck. Is that right?
Yes, yes.
And then, and then you plan on putting another deck, a new deck on the back of the. Addition, is that right also?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Ms. Lee, is, is there a reason dimensionally or otherwise why the new deck is located? Encroaching upon the accessory structure setback as opposed to, in essence, centering, centering it. On the lot, moving it toward the garage somehow?
Took my question, Rob.
Yes, because that will make basically the two car garage not accessible.
Right. You won't be able to get into the garage.
Correct.
It's too tight.
Correct.
E- even if, even if you move it five feet over, it won't.
Right now, right now, I think I only have like probably like, looks like sixteen inch or eighteen inch now. But right to the Belgium block. I mean, during construction, they probably wouldn't redo the Belgium block, but to, in order for the car to be able to use the garage. That is the thing I have to be pushed. To encroaching that accessory size, structure size setback. The, the house somehow basically just placed too much to the right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions of this witness?
So just to clarify, I had a question, Craig. Just a question, in the, in the existing. On the left, basically it shows a two story frame for the garage. Is that, is that what is going to continue in the proposed as well? Is it two story or is that just the ground level garage?
Oh, you mean existing survey? It is a garage. When I, actually, you've, the garage only has. The upstairs, it's more storage. It's like a loft, but it does not of the enough height. I believe it's, it's. It has a storage loft, but it's not storage. It's, I don't, it's not habitable by code with that height. I believe it's below six foot A.
Got you. Thanks. And that will continue, I'm presuming, in the, that's not being touched.
That's right. That's not, yes. There's no intention to use that.
Thank you.
Another question?
Go ahead, Steve.
So if you, if you do not add the deck, the new deck. What, what does that do to the variance requests?
Without that, first of all, we eliminated that side. Minimum accessory structure size setback that will be eliminated. It will help with lot coverage. Rear yard unoccupied. And maximum accessory use coverage. I don't know if it will eliminate it.
The hundred and ninety five square feet.
Yes, it's thirteen by. Yes. If it will.
I think the only thing you're going to get an advantage of is your, is your setback. Everything else, everything else will be made better, but I don't think you're going to eliminate anything.
Right. I'm just looking at that now. It would be better, but.
Because your accessory coverage is already over.
Right.
It's the existing condition is already over. And then also somehow they have to use the backyard, right? That's, I know it's not from a zoning perspective.
And lock coverage would still be forty five point five if you eliminated the deck.
Okay, yes, that helps, but it's. The lot coverage now is. It helped with two, basically two point eight percent, right? One nine ninety five. Divided by. It helps with a lot coverage will reduce like two point eight percent. Yes, it, it doesn't eliminate the lot coverage. It does. Yeah, basically lot coverage is still there, but it will, will be better. The rear yard, it will help with the rear yard, but I'm not sure whether it will be eliminated.
Who won? It'll be a twenty, like twenty two, twenty one point nine percent.
Now, it wouldn't then, right?
Right, correct.
It basically makes better, but it wouldn't.
It just makes everything better, but you will not eliminate anything. Did those calculations.
Correct. And then. Yes, for the, and they, they, the, right now, the existing finished floor. It's about five steps above. You know, above the yard, above grade. They, they need to be able to use it. Okay, I know it's not a zoning issue, but.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? So Ms. Lee, one of the things that I find troubling, of course, is this, I guess it's about three feet that sticks out or so. Outside the envelope of the house, sort of where Mr. Simon was alluding to. Is there any way possible to? Make that condition better?
The deck, right?
Correct. I mean, technically, people in the backyard are outside the envelope of the house.
Yeah, I guess if you stand by the lower left corner of the deck, you are, as if you are standing on a balcony. To use it is not. It's not odd to use it that way. I know that the house looks kind of a little. Zigzagged toward the back.
How tall is that off the ground?
Flip, flip the deck.
Yeah.
The, the driveway on the right.
No, no. How high is it off the ground? Is it on, is it on grade?
Five steps.
Five steps, so.
Yes, it needs, it's railing. It's to a height that needs railing. Yeah.
So what, what's the deck height at? Thirty inches, three feet?
Yes, yes, it's about thirty, thirty six, yeah, about three feet high. Yeah, it's, it's about the height of the current deck now. And they had, there's a railing and then to the, to the, to the, to the level then it needs railing.
Would the owners consider screening that area somehow with either trees or something to make it a little less obvious from the street?
I think that's something, yes, was considering.
So you need trees, minimum six to seven feet above the root ball to get that, to start with that.
I see, basically for the privacy of the neighbor. Okay.
Exactly, in the, in the streetscape.
Okay. I see.
Any questions from the audience regarding this application? Go ahead. Sorry, Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Just one more question occurred to me. When, when I went to. Yeah, sorry, just one more question occurred to me. When when I went to the house, I also saw a um, a swing set in the backyard. Uh, that that's, is that included in these calculations?
Um, I think I I had a conversation with the homeowner and then that was it's that was a treehouse they built for the children. So it wasn't if it and then Kate, you had a conversation with the town where you were ma- you were made the treehouse, correct?
Yeah, we we put that in like two thousand seventeen, Cliff built that. I did search the statutes for the town and I called the building department. And um, they said something kind of funny like um, we do have one rule, have as much fun as you want. I think that was the rule. So.
There's no ordinance such treehouses.
Yeah, so that was the the
It was a treehouse. It looked like it. I didn't realize it was a treehouse.
There's no swings or anything on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the town is not.
I did a word search in the ordinance for the word fun. I didn't come up with it.
Probably not gonna find treehouse either.
Okay, thanks.
So um, any other questions from from the board? Then I will open up to questions, questions only from the pet from the attendees. Anyone in the audience that has a question regarding this application? I do not see anyone with their hand up. Uh, anyone from the audience that has comments in relation to this application? I do not see hands up on that either. So close the public portion of the meeting. Uh, board members, who would like to comment first on this application?
Craig, I have I have a question for you.
Sure.
Did your uh question about screening elicit a positive response?
I I took from Mrs. Ms. Lee's comments that yes, that that was something that would be considered and also um I think Cliff and Kate agreed, correct?
Yes.
So, yes.
And 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 Mr. Chairman, just to just to clarify um on Mr. Steinberg's comment. Um, in terms of the trees being a minimum of six to seven feet above the root ball, um, those types of trees, would they be evergreen arborvitae's or the equivalent green?
That is correct, evergreen arborite, arborite, that type of.
Yeah, I I that's what I would recommend as well, basically, um, yeah, six feet of variety, six to eight feet of variety, six of them along the deck. Yeah.
How many?
Um, I would say. Yes, they are usually planted a six feet apart, six, six of varieties with the height of minimum six feet. Will that be acceptable?
We do already have those lining, actually, that side of the property that you're talking about.
Oh, okay, that's a good point.
Yes, but in order to screen it in properly so that that the deck would not be visible. So if there's any holes.
Make them closer.
Exactly.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory, Joe?
Yeah, sure.
Who else would like to comment?
I I guess I will. I I have some trouble with this application. Um, and the reason is, so this is an R six, which is like a six thousand square foot lot, and this lot is uh, bigger, significantly bigger than that. And um I I don't really, so besides the size of the lot, I I don't really see a hardship created by, you know, the shape of the property, the topographical conditions or some extraordinary situation um that affects this property. I don't I don't see the hardship. So those two things for me makes it uh, I I I I have some trouble, you know, uh, with this in terms of justifying the variances requested.
I'll I'll go. Um, I I absolutely see a hardship here. I mean, we've got this uh, large garage and driveway that seem to be driving most of the variances here. I think to expect an applicant to take down a garage is just not a reasonable expectation. I think also as a board, we see a lot of cases where um, there's a detached garage and it's too small to fit. Um, you know, one or even, you know, or or two cars in. Um, and you know, applicants are asking us, you know, uh, seeking variances to expand it so they can get the cars off the road and off the driveway. Um, I, you know, I think that that this is a small ask here, what the applicants are asking for. Um, and as our architect said, they're not just trying to make this house livable for themselves. I think that anyone who moved into a house like this would um, need the space that the applicants are asking for. So um, I could absolutely support this application. I would be in favor of the screening. Um, understanding why that deck needs to come off the side of the house the way that it does um, to make it usable and to still, you know, give the applicants access into the garage. I would like to see the screening, but I I could support this application.
Yeah, when I was looking at the property, you know, it's this this property has similar issues to many properties in the South Mountain area as to what Jessica had just said with respect to detached garages and long driveways eating up a lot of building, a lot of, you know, lot coverage. And um, it's not uncommon. It's a little more extreme in this case because so little rear yard is left after the proposed um, after the proposed, you know, addition. Um, so I I can't say that I love it. On the other hand, the utility you get out of the house, I can see how it could be argued that that is uh, a favorable, that is a favorable trade-off. Um, given the situation.
Anyone else comment?
I think from a, from an absolute number perspective, uh, I I do hear Amy's point, but from an absolute numbers perspective, I think the variance sought does not seem imposing. Uh, and also the the narrowness of the lot, which is fifty feet versus what is stipulated in the in the R six of sixty, I think that sort of makes it narrower and sort of, you know, making it a little bit of a hardship uh, in terms of, you know, having an elongated uh, home. And I think they're just kind of looking to extend, given the, as they mentioned about uh, the 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 increase in the family size and and stuff. So I I I would be supportive of this as well, based on the earlier comments that uh uh, Joe and Craig raised about screening uh, the deck from the neighbors. I think that that's the only thing I would I would go with. Otherwise, I would generally be supportive.
Any other comments? So, uh, to to answer some something that what Amy said regarding the hardship, um, I'm I believe with Jessica that this, there is a hardship here. If this lot was ten feet wider, uh, several of these variances would almost disappear, depending on how that ten feet were allocated. Um, the minimum accessory structure aside back would side yourself like would almost disappear depending on how that ten feet was. If it was five and five on both sides of the property, it wouldn't. But if it leaned towards that one side, it could potentially disappear. So there is a clear hardship here. Furthermore, um, if this lot was six thousand square feet instead of seventy-two fifty, we'd also be looking at a massive FAR issue tonight, too. So fortunately, because they do have that extra twelve hundred and fifty square feet over the standard, this addition of the house itself, which is which amounts to three hundred and seventy-five square feet, does not trigger an FAR. So if they were built on top of it, then they would probably wind up with an FAR issue. So and also can and also considering the fact that you have a garage that isn't four hundred square feet, I think it's five hundred and change.
Yes, I think.
So, yeah, so it is, it is over the size. So with with the screening, uh, as mentioned, uh, I would, I would also support this application.
Actually, I've, can I, can I?
We've actually closed the public portion of the meeting at this point, so. Um, in that case, do I have a motion on this application?
Move approval?
Do I have a second?
Yes, with the with the stipulation um, in place to to screen, Craig, would you just enumerate what what that is again with?
Uh, six to seven feet above the root ball. We discussed six trees. Ample screening of that three-foot section of the deck or five-foot section of the deck, whatever that is, that hangs off the side of the house.
And and you're talking about the side lot and in front of it?
That's correct.
In an L screen.
So I'll I'll second the motion as stipulated.
Amy Lawrence?
No.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Slender?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Guatt?
Yes.
Ray Klattner?
Yes, good luck with the projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next case, calendar thirty-eight, forty-four, twenty-one, Forty Holly Drive, Ernest and Jenny Chulim. Cholim.
Okay, Rich, who else am I bringing over?
Uh, Steve Hockstein.
Uh, who, okay, and that's who my.
Homeowner here as well or no?
Yeah, they should be.
Yeah, I see the hand raised in the audience.
Oh, yeah, there we are. Oh, it disappeared.
Yeah, I don't, who, okay, hold on. He's back.
Oh, there he is.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we first need to swear everyone in, so Mr. Fishman will do that for him.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Um, whoever else is gonna testify? Mr. Keller, you testifying?
Yes.
Thank you. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, no matter an appendy?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I do.
Um, that's fine. You can you can lower your hands. Thank you. Would you state your full name, please, the applicants?
Ernest Lim.
Jenny Cho Lim.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mrs. Lim, would you like to get started? Um, we also need to qualify your professionals, but if you'd like to start?
Sure, thank you very much. So, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairwoman, and members of the committee, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. So my name is Jenny Cho Lim and this is Ernest Lim. And uh, we have two young daughters, ages five and seven. We've lived in Short Hills for about four years now, and we feel extremely fortunate to be a part of this wonderful community. When we first moved here, we purchased a home. However, over time, we felt that it wasn't quite the right fit for us. So we looked for opportunities to buy a new home, and that's when we came across Forty Holly Drive. We love the street and the surrounding neighborhood. However, the home there was an old ranch uh, that needed um, a lot of work. Um, it was basically in a state of disrepair. So ultimately, we made the decision to build our dream home in which our girls could grow up in. From the very get-go, we knew that the property was on a steep slope. And so we were hoping that we could possibly make the driveway a bit safer and the backyard a bit more usable. So that's when we realized that we would need to apply for a variance. We hired Steve Hockstein to design the home and Rich Keller to do the site engineering. So we'll turn it over to them to go over the details. Thank you very much once again for your time and for your kind consideration.
Sure, who would like to start?
Um, I'll I'll start.
Sure, would you uh, give us your credentials, please?
Sure, my name is Stephen Hockstein, S T V E N H O C K S T E I N. I am a partner A H M Architects, two eighty-one Main Street in Melbourne, New Jersey. I am a licensed architect in New York and New Jersey. I have a master's degree in architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been, uh, my license are is current and I've testified in front of numerous boards, including Melbourne in the last few years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hockstein.
Senior, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Hockstein, your uh, license remains a good standing?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem.
Uh, go ahead.
Sure, um. I um, typically, um, may I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Can you see it?
Nope.
No.
Yeah. Now.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, typically, when I'm doing an application, I I walk uh, the board through.
Excuse me, Mr. Hockstein, could someone please mute? There's a lot of background noise.
Excuse me, Mr. Partner. Give me one second.
Oh, that's you, Phil, okay.
Yeah, one second, please.
Sure.
Ready?
Hang on one second, we're just waiting for our photographer to come back.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hockstein.
Thank you. Um, typically, when I am presenting to a board, I walk the board through the plan because we're asking for a floor ratio or building coverage or lot coverage. Um, this this house is complying in all bulk uh, requirements of the Milton Land Use Ordinance. The only problem we really have with this property is the fact that it's a steeply sloped lot. So I think the most important thing to demonstrate to you is to show you that the um, the house is if you if you look at the height of the house, the average height of the house um, is only thirty feet high at the average. Um. The problem is, on the right-hand side, where we have the garage, we have, in order to get the garage to work, we have a problem in that the lowest to highest point of the garage needs a variance. Um, I really struggled with being able to get the house to work without a variance, but the problem is as I moved the house lower, the first floor became lower and it became lower than the backyard. And if I move the the garage floor up, it made the driveway steeper. And one of the problems with this with the lot, if you've seen the lot, it's got a very steeply sloped driveway. So aside from the fact that we're asking for a variance from the lowest to the highest elevation and the steep slope disturbance, everything else is is um, complying with the house. Um, some of the other things I that I want to point out is that, and I'm gonna show you a a rendering of the house, is the first floor and the second.
Hold on a second, Mr. Hockstein. Um, I'm assuming that the plans that you presented up to this moment are plans that you previously submitted to the board, correct?
You're right, and and this was something that I submitted at a later date. You're correct.
Correct. So why don't we mark this for identification? Is it, how many slides are you gonna show us? Just one?
Um, I'm just going to show you this additional evidence.
Okay, so this one slide is gonna be a colored rendering. We're gonna mark it as A one. And if you can just give us a little bit of a foundation for it, um, did you create this and what is it?
Um, this is a rendering. Um, we submitted the plans to a professional renderer and using our plans. Uh, they they generated this elevation um, from our site plan and the uh, plans that we uh, provided to them of the the architectural plans.
And when was that done?
Um, it was done within the last two weeks.
Okay.
Um, what I want to point out is a is is a couple of things about this. Um, I think it's important to note that even though we're going for a height variance, the second floor and first floor, if you've seen the site, are the second floor and first floor, if you've seen the site, are pretty much equal with the neighbors on the left side and the right side. Um, so they're not really looking up at this house, you're really only looking up at the house from the street. The other thing which we've done is we've sloped the roof away from the, the side so that when you look at the elevation, which I'll go back to the elevations, you'll see that this part of the house slopes away from the side. So, we mitigated the, the height effect on the neighbors by sloping the roof away from the neighbor. So, the really, the only part that is above from lowest to highest would be the very, the ridges of that, it's actually this ridge on the left, sorry, that is a little higher than what's allowed according to the, um, the ordinance. And we feel that, that the overall, uh, house is appropriate for the neighborhood, and that we're really not asking for anything that's out of scale or unreasonable for this neighborhood, especially because if you went there, you'll see that there's similarly sited houses on either side of this, and, um, I know Rich Keller is going to talk a little more about the site and, and how it works, but we really feel that, um, we worked hard to mitigate any variances that we need, but we really couldn't successfully get the garage floor to work and the first floor to work because the, the first floor is where the old house was, uh, as far as elevation, and the garage is just a little bit deeper because of this problem with the driveway. And one other thing I also want to point out is that the existing driveway, um, I'm going to stop sharing this. The existing driveway is non-conforming in that it's too close to the right side, so in, in relocating the driveway, we've actually moved it away from the, the right side, and now the buffer is compliant. We really think that this house is going to be, uh, have a positive impact for the owners, and there's really no detriment to, to, uh, Melbourne. And, um, unless you have questions about the architecture, I think, uh, Rich, Rich's, uh, site testimony is, is going to be very important to this application.
Any questions from the board for this applicant, try for this, this professional? And then the audience have any questions for the, for Mr. Hochstein? I see none, uh, Mr. Keller, would you like to speak?
Yes, uh, Rich Keller, I'm the engineer and planner for the applicant. I was licensed as an engineer in nineteen eighty-nine and as a planner in nineteen ninety, and I gave years, so I don't have to count up the, the dates because it's over forty years now.
Excuse me, Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller, this is the court reporter. Um, you're not coming across clearly on my end for some reason. So, maybe if you could slow down a little bit, speak a little louder, I would appreciate it.
I could do, I could do both, let me see if I can also raise my.
I, I, Mr. Keller, I've already trained you over the years, don't remember?
I know.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, as indicated, I am a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, licensed as a, an engineer in nineteen eighty-nine, and as a planner in nineteen ninety. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, and that is a concentration in, uh, Water Resources and Environmental Engineering, and I hold a master's degree in architecture with a concentration in urban planning and design, and that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I was also an adjunct professor for approximately eleven years, both undergraduate and graduate. I have appeared before approximately one hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I have been the planning board and Board of Adjustment Engineer in Long Hill Township for the last three years. I have acted as the conflict planner, uh, conflict engineer when there's that, when the engineers have conflict in South Orange, and I've also acted as a planning consultant to the borough of North Caldwell. Um, my license is due to renew in, uh, in two months, and I've gotten nearly double the amount of credits, so my licenses are in good shape and ready to go for, for the next renewal. I look forward to, uh, for both this board and the, the Board of Adjustment and the planning board, and I look forward to testifying for this.
Thank you, Mr. Keller, please proceed.
Mr. Keller, are you testifying as a professional engineer and a professional planner this evening?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So, if I can, I, I will now share my screen, I'm going to start off, um, Mr. Simon, with the plan that was submitted as part of the application, the variance plan, and then I will have two subsequent, uh, exhibits after that, so I'm going to go ahead and share. And I'm assuming everyone can see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, this is again the grading and drainage erosion control plan, it is part, it is submitted as part of your package, uh, so I don't think we'll need to mark that as, as an exhibit. If we go to the upper left-hand corner, you'll see that the property in question is Forty Holly Drive. It's Lot Nine in Block forty-seven oh four. It's about a half an acre property or twenty-two thousand three hundred and fourteen square feet, um, located on the south side, southeast to the north of this drawing, south side of Holly Drive. It's about four hundred feet, uh, southwest of Athens Road, and it's about nine hundred feet east of Great Hills Road. The property has a hundred feet of frontage, uh, along Holly Drive. It is trapped as little in shape, so it is nearly a hundred and seventy-five feet at the back, it gets wider at the back, and the average depth is, uh, a hundred and fifty-eight feet. So, with respect to the bulk requirements of the R four zone, it is a fully conforming lot. I'm going to go to an, an exhibit now. And this, uh, this is labeled Lim Cho Existing Conditions Pre-House Removal. It is the title and topographic survey, it's the base of the drawing that you, that we had for you in a second, I'll go back to. Uh, it stated the site conditions are as of four twenty-two thousand and twenty-one, and the slopes were added, the, the slope, uh, percentages were added uh, for the purposes of this evening today, so the current date is one twenty-four, two thousand and two.
So, Rich, Rich, are we going to mark this as A two?
Should be A two, correct.
Okay, and I apologize, what's, what's the title of this document?
Title on the top says, um, we'll get to it, Lim Cho Existing Conditions Pre-House Removal.
Thank you.
I wanted to be clear, when we developed this and submitted to the board, the house was up. The house, uh, was in an unsafe condition, had a fair amount of mold and mildew in it, uh, had a fair amount of asbestos in it, and so the applicant, um, elected, knowing either way that it would, would need to be tore down, it was not salvageable, they went ahead and demoed it before the end of, of this past year. So, um, this is the site, uh, when we did the survey back in April, and you'll see the green areas are the steep slope areas, and what you'll notice, um, on this, uh, this, uh, exhibit is that, um, basically, having done this for forty years and done a lot of residential subdivisions years ago when they were in vogue, uh, multi-lot subdivisions, you realize, when you, when you drop a road into an existing, uh, topography, uh, that has some pitch to it, you're going to cut the slopes on the high side and fill on the right side to hide the happy medium on the drive. Um, the same things when you come to develop the site, you're going to clear a, a path, and you're going to cut slopes in the back, and you're going to push ground in the front. Accordingly, uh, that's why you see a fairly typical arrangement of steep slopes, we have a large quantity of steep slopes. Our ordinance defines steep slopes as slopes in excess of twenty percent. So, we've got a, a large swath of steep slopes in the front, immediately adjacent to the driveway that comes up the right side. There is some steep slopes right where they created a retaining wall, um, uh, to mitigate the difference between the garage under condition and the rear yard, and then again, where they created this flat building pad, they pushed, they cut slopes, uh, to try to get a little bit of breathing room in the backyard, and they really just got the minimal, and then accordingly, there's another section of steep slopes. So, in our, in our estimate, these are actually, uh, most likely artificially created upon development of this property. The area was subdivided originally in nineteen fifty-seven, the old, uh, one, one and a half story house was built in nineteen fifty-nine. If you look on the left side, you'll see that the slope from Holly Drive to the back line is seventeen point nine percent. That's thirty point two five, thirty foot four inches, uh, thirty foot three inches of grade change from the front to the back of the property over a hundred and sixty-nine feet, so the overall average slope from front to back is seventeen point nine percent, which what I, I would point out is less than the twenty percent considered for steep slopes. So, in our estimate, um, as we've seen throughout the town and other communities, the steep slopes in the back and the front were really created upon construction of the existing home. I also wanted to point out the existing driveway, as the architect had mentioned, uh, it does come up, basically starts at the property line, meanders up, and then creates a little, a little, uh, uh, close proximity again to the property line near the garages to try to get enough room for area cars to maneuver into the driveway. Um, it does not meet the five foot required, and I would point out that the existing slope is twenty-one point nine percent. Actually, before the limbs looked at this, I looked at it with another client, it was snowy day. Uh, we've talked about the property, and as I was coming down, I basically surfed all the way down from elevation ninety-three to eighty-two, and hit the bottom and rolled into the street. Um, it was very steep, and it is very steep. Uh, twenty-one point nine percent, um, is, is an excessive slope, is a difficult slope to maintain. One of our goals was to try to find, fit a new house in there, recognizing just as the old, uh, developer of this property did, find a happy medium where we would hopefully not touch the front and minimize our carving into the backyard to create a modern home with available amenities and actually hopefully soften the driveway. So, our starting point in the house, um, I've often found, um, as smart as we think we are, some of these old developments from the fifties, they really understood the site development, and the house was really, the first floor was really appropriately sited. Any lower, and it would have been below the backyard, would have, and, and required, uh, more cutting in the backyard, steeper slopes. Uh, any higher, and you would have, you would, uh, it would have been detached from the ground, I think, as, um, Mr. Hochstein's elevation showed. The house sits appropriately above the ground and at appropriate location. What we did look at, uh, when we started the design, we decided to set the new house exactly at the one oh five eighty-four, and we tried to hold the existing driveway in ninety-seven forty-two, and we had a house that was fully compliant with both the height uh, and the, both the height from minimum to maximum as well as above-average grade. However, it didn't solve any of the problems with the driveway. In order to soften that driveway, since I can't lengthen the driveway, I need to cut the grade. And so, when we looked at it, um, recognizing that, um, from the first floor to the ridge would be fully compliant, what we look to do is then lower the driveway three foot one inches. Three foot one inches would soften that driveway up considerably, and really, it's what we call a technical variance, in that from the street, you will not, you would not see anything except what you would expect to be a conforming house to all, um, sections of the, of the ordinance terms of height. It's only when you're in the driveway that you would see the extra, uh, height, and we're actually one point five eight feet higher than permitted by code from the lowest point to the highest point, and again, the effects of that are mitigated by the fact that the architect has, uh, pulled the, pulled the sloping group away from it. Uh, and it's actually, uh, I believe the ridge right over the garage, even though it slopes back, is right about forty feet. It's the secondary ridge that sits over the main house, so further back from the garage, that actually rises up to be one point, uh, five eight feet or one foot seven inches above what's permitted, and the fact that it can only be seen when you're in the driveway, and the driveway is shielded from view by the existing steep slopes and, and our proposed, um, changes, that, 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 that variance, uh, comes to light. What I'd like to do is just go to, uh, our A three for a moment. And this is, uh, A three is a photo exhibit of nine annotated site and neighborhood photographs, uh, for Ernest and Jenny Cho Lim, except as noted, uh, all the photographs were taken by myself on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, that's last Friday. The first is a photo key, you'll see that what we did is I have nine photos, starting with one looking up at the old house, and then we looked at the next two houses to the right, number two and three, we looked at the next two houses to the left, four or five, we looked up the driveway for photograph number six, photograph number seven, we looked at the, uh, how the property to the left was developed, and for photograph number eight, how the right property was developed, and nine, we got to look at the slopes in the backyard. So, if we go to the, uh, first sheet, you'll see, this is the old ranch, um, that, um, sat, um, at the same elevation we're proposing, first floor, you can see that, um, you don't even see the bottom of the house, so even though, um, Steve's drawing shows a base, you won't see it because we're not changing any of the front landscaping or grading associated with the front yard. Our original goal was to not change anything in the front yard, but then we, uh, we decided to deal with the driveway. We go to the adjacent home to the right, you'll see that all four, all four of the surrounding homes essentially offer the same, um, housing typology, since they have the property slopes from Holly Drive, uh, up to, I think it's Troy to the rear, um, they, and they slope, uh, basically from left to right. Uh, they all have a condition where they create a garage underneath, retaining walls to get up to the front yard, um, and, uh, and you get a, a rather tall condition on the right side. This actually, this house was, is not, does not have as steep slopes as the adjacent one did. We developed this in two thousand sixteen, uh, it is fully compliant with the ordinance, you'll see garage under, uh, two retaining walls to get up to the backyard. This, uh, this driveway is not as steep because the slopes were continued to flatten as we moved down. Our property has the most, uh, excessive slopes, uh, on the block out of the five lots, and a similar house typology. The, I would point out that this was actually also developed under an older steep slope ordinance that allowed, you know, closer to eight or nine thousand square feet of development, rather than the, um, we're draconian ordinance we have today, which only allows one thousand square feet regardless of your lot size. The next photo is, uh, thirty-two Holly, this was a home that was completed in two thousand seven, and you'll see similar typology, the garage under, retaining walls up to the rear yard, and then rear yard development in the back. The, um, the house to the left is forty-six Holly, this was completed in two thousand fourteen, again, garage under. Now, our property benefits from the fact that our slopes rise up higher and hide a lot more of the foundation than this one, so you won't see as much of this by, by the topography, but a similar typology, garage under, series of steps and retaining walls up into the backyard, and I'll show you the backyards in a moment. And then finally, the last house or two up to the left is forty-eight Holly Drive with a similar high sighting and site development, garage under, retaining walls up into the rear yard as they continue up, uh, up the street. Next, looking at the driveway, this is the driveway at, uh, actually twenty-two and a half percent, but I think we took a closer look at it, it was between twenty-one point nine and twenty-two and a half percent. Um, I would point out that, uh, the property line is exactly, basically right on the, uh, on the curb line here, as it meanders slightly way in the back. The proposed driveway, we would relocate that three to five feet to the left. Once we decide to cut that down to three feet, I would lose any grandfathering, and it's an opportunity to bring the site closer into compliance with the ordinance by moving the driveway three to five feet further away. That means also, when we do the drop in the grade, we won't have any adverse impact on the root systems of the neighbors' ever, evergreens that line the right side of the driveway. Um, while we are planning to shift that over, and we're planning, uh, two, two-foot retaining walls in the front yard, fully compliant with the height requirement, we are looking to cut into about eight hundred and eighty square feet of steep slopes on the left side, buttressed by walls. Again, that condition would still be that, um, from the perspective of the street, you still wouldn't see the garage floor, so you'd see the top of the house, and you'd never perceive that, uh, elevation variance we need from low point to high point. And then, uh, looking to the left in the rear yard, you can see, this is the typical type of development on these sites. This is actually a single wall, uh, that was placed to create a level pad, uh, of five to six feet. The applicants, uh, wanted something that was more easily landscaped, so we're proposing two four-foot walls with a five-foot separation that will allow for landscaping both below and between and above the walls to break it down, so it wouldn't appear, uh, as, uh, as severe as this, but it's the basic typology of the neighborhood. If we look to the house to the right, you'll see a similar, um, there was an initial retaining wall of, uh, three to five feet. Uh, once the owners moved in, they actually came back and, and got a variant, not a variance, they got a, uh, a grading permit to do a secondary wall to create a flatter backyard, because, well, we had a flat backyard here, um, the backyard in the, in, behind the walls was very steep, so they implemented a second wall, this is probably a five-foot and a four-foot wall. Again, our walls are slightly lower, and we're not getting as much backyard because our property is a little steeper, but similar type development. And then finally, looking, uh, from the property line, the house that was removed, you can see that yellow line that I've traced on there is approximately the limits of the steep slopes, so everything to the left of that is steep slopes, and you can see, by our ordinance, um, twenty percent is not very steep. Um, general rule of thumb is one on three slopes, so, uh, one foot up, three foot out, is easily maintained by lawn mowers and doesn't require any special needs for, for reinforcements, for erosion, um, or ground stability. This is, uh, this is actually less than one on three, but we are looking at basically carving into the back, dropping a double retaining wall, four foot, come back five feet, second four-foot wall, just to create some usable area. You can see as it is now, when they put the house in, it's really still underground. So, when we held the existing first floor and pushed into the backyard, because it was the appropriate thing the site wanted, we're still low, so we had to carve this area out a little bit, and that, that's what necessitated two retaining walls. we're still low. So we had to carve this area out a little bit and that that's what necessitated two retaining walls. I would point out the two retaining walls uh, still in more than fifteen to twenty-three feet from the rear line. So there certainly uh, we're not looking for an over grab. We're looking just to create a useful backyard. If I then go back to the, if I can find it, go back to the um, variance application drawing, you'll see the proposed development calls for uh, again, holding the exact same first floor as the existing house, dropping the driveway three foot, one inches. We're still a little low, so we want to come down a step for drainage purposes and termite purposes. That creates an area for patio. Uh, the applicant wanted to be very, very sure that um, if at some point their budget allows for a plunge pool, they can still fit one in. It can be done. It would be a twelve by twenty-four, but it's kind of tight. The uh, but I think either way, uh, thirty-two feet of of flat yard behind the house on a half acre site is not an unreasonable amount of flat area. Uh, as indicated, the the front yard has eight hundred eighty square feet. That's the blue line where we're kicking that driveway over, moving it over three to five feet. The retaining wall and then uh, no higher than two feet. And then two, two-foot retaining walls um, in the front yard nested to limit the amount of steep slope disturbance. We could have graded that out with no walls, but we would have probably doubled the amount of steep slope disturbance in the front. We really wanted to maintain the character of the house from the street with no, no visible changes to that landscaping or grading. In the backyard, we also did want to make sure that the existing house, and I've driven up, it's very difficult, it was very difficult to back up and out of the driveway and turn around. So since we're moving the driveway off the property line, it's important to allow for an area of back out. So a car can pull out of the driveway and then go down because it's very difficult to consider going down the uh, the driveway backing up. Uh, the rear yard disturbance is about twenty nine, twenty-six hundred and fifty-five square feet. Um, uh, plus the four hundred and sixty-four, plus the eight hundred and eighty-four in front means we need a steep slope disturbance of four thousand and three square feet where one thousand square feet is is permitted. If we look at the zoning chart very quickly, you'll see that as indicated lock coverage, lock uh, building coverage, building height from average grade is compliant. Uh, our accessory coverage is shown even with the pool is a half of what's permitted by the ordinance. Rear and occupied is well in excess of uh, the minimum required. FAR is compliant. Um, the house is basically fully compliant with exception of that one foot, seven inch deviation from the garage up. And again, we think this is a technical variance because uh, it's really not by raising the height of the house. It's by lowering the ground to get a safer driveway. So we need two variances, one for the building height, low point to high, and one for steep slope disturbance. Uh, with regard to the uh, last thing I'll point out again is that uh, again, we tried to not push these retaining walls too far to the back. So we wouldn't affect any of the neighbors' trees. Uh, we have between fifteen and twenty-five foot separation between the rear, between the walls um, and the rear property line. I will stop sharing for a second. So we see this approvable under both C one and C two under municipal, under the Ministry of Land Use Law. And C one, and that's for, that's for both variances. And C one, where the existing man-made topography um, and the location on the site combined with the location of the existing structures on the site. That's both horizontally and vertically, the driveway creates a hardship and redevelopment existing property without the need for variance relief. We also think the flexible C two variance applies and the board can, as the board knows, the board can decide uh, that it meets the positive criteria under C one or C two. Don't need to declare which one. Um, C one is a hardship created by the the existing conditions on the site, namely the topography. Uh, what we think is man-made. And C two is called the flexible C variance where it doesn't, you do not have to have a hardship. Um, it is where the uh, the proposed plan represents a better planning alternative than the one that will be conforming and where the benefits outweigh the detriments. And generally, we need to advance uh, the purposes of of the Land Use Act hearing under forty fifty-five D two. Uh, and we advance a couple of them. First is general welfare or under A is general welfare and safety. Um, we're developing a property in a manner that is consistent um, with sound planning and engineering principles uh, and uh, development in the community and certainly within the neighborhood. And we're also bringing the site closer into conformance with zoning ordinance by eliminating an existing non-conforming driver location. Safety is also advanced under section A. Uh, the driveway is much safer than the proposed seventeen percent uh, with enough room to turn around and avoid backing out. Uh, seventeen percent is still steep. It's not perfect, but it's a lot better than twenty-three percent. Seventeen percent is can is consistent with, if you've ever been over to the Wyoming section, uh, Clinton uh, Avenue and what, and Mountain Avenue are both about seventeen percent. That's where I live. Um, not ideal, but they're not inconsistent with uh, driveways we've seen in the town and certainly much better than the twenty-two to twenty-three percent. Um, also, we have improved aesthetics. I think that uh, if the architect were to try to lose um, the height, first of all, what would happen is at some point you would lose the height bonus. So instead of just losing one foot, seven inches, you'd actually have to lose four foot, seven inches. And the whole reason our ordinance was designed with a height bonus is that uh, is based upon the recognition that when you have steeper roofs, um, the house appears smaller because it doesn't appear so squat and stocky. And if you were to uh, try to make that comply with the low to high, you'd actually have to lose about four feet. Your roof should get very flat and the house would become relatively squat and unattractive and we feel would would overpower the site. So certainly, we think it's an aesthetic improvement, uh, aesthetic benefit and the benefits certainly outweigh any detriment. Of course, with any variance, we need to demonstrate that we meet the negative criteria and that's that there's no detriment to the public good. And that the the plan will not substantially impair the intent and purpose, the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Um, with uh, with regard to the public good, um, case law often suggests we look at the purpose of the ordinance for which relief is sought. Under uh, six oh eight is the uh, the section on steep slopes under the background section. They point out that disturbance of steep slopes can result in accelerated erosion processes from stormwater runoff and subsequent sedimentation of water bodies with associated degradation of water quality and loss of aquatic life. And that related effects include soil loss, changes in natural topography and drainage patterns, increased flooding potential, further fragmentation of forests and habitat areas, and compromised aesthetic values. Um, in this particular case, uh, we don't compromise any of those. Soil erosion uh, sediment control measures will be in place um, uh, to protect the site during construction. The less than thirty-three percent slopes in the backyard uh, that exist and will remain or will after we do the walls are less than the one on three. Uh, that's recommended for additional stabilization. Flattening the areas uh, below and above the retaining walls will actually slow water down where stormwater can be easily intercepted uh, and routed through stormwater management devices. There are no water bodies downhill uh, of the property to affect. Uh, the topography is not natural. Uh, the change in uh, there's no change in the natural drainage patterns. Um, there are no increased flooding potential since all roof water will be collecting the stormwater management system that would be required uh, as part of the grading permit process. There's no fragmentation of forested areas because there are none. A tree replacement plan will be required and presented as part of the grading permit process if this were to be approved. Um, and the uh, retaining walls and property perimeter perimeter create uh, landscape opportunities uh, both on the left side, right side and the rear of the property. Uh, no water quality will be affected. Um, there's basically, um, there's no reason that we can't do a a plan that will be fully approval by uh, your engineering department. We think that the application, um, there is a hardship on the site. We sought hard to avoid variances, but with this property uh, it just wasn't possible. The fact that the the slopes, I believe, are not natural. There's no negative impact. Uh, it actually creates a much safer and more manageable property in terms of stormwater management. Uh, we think it's uh, the best opportunity to redevelop this property uh, in a manner that's consistent with the master plan in promoting the uh, uh, the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality and it's not inconsistent with the character of the existing neighborhood. Uh, we think uh, it meets the positive criteria both under C one or C two as well as the negative criteria and estimate improvement.
Thank you very much. Can anyone have any questions for Mr. Keller from the board? Go ahead, Rob.
Rich, just clarification with regard to moving the driveway in essence to the left and and recreating it. I I noticed that you're going to be doing some grading, I think, along the right, right side there. Have you done it? Um, any review of that grading, uh, proposed grading in terms of uh, disturbance of tree roots for the neighbors' trees to the right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I said. We had looked at that and our arborist, we have an in-house arborist and landscape architect and felt that by by moving that driveway five feet off uh, in an area where the driveway already exists, a retaining wall would not compromise those roots in any way.
And and the grading won't either, correct?
Grading, we need to actually, we're actually keeping the grading where it is. We're putting a retaining wall uh, just off of the of the dry, of the new curb line so that we're not going to be doing any grading uh, or limiting the grading in that area.
Thank you.
Any questions for board members? Go ahead, Wolfgang.
And and just a, just a clarification. I know you said this, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly, that the height variance, which is being requested is specifically solely due to the fact that the driveway itself is being lowered by three feet.
Exactly.
And were that not the case, there wouldn't, that that variance would not be with a, wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, the first house that Steve designed, we held the first floor at the same height and the garage floor at the same height and it was fully compliant. Uh, we elected to drop that grade three feet for safety purposes and soften the driveway. And that's the only reason we need a variance, which again, you wouldn't see from the street anyways.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions for Mr. Keller? Uh, I see a hand raised for Ed. Could bring Ed over. Ed, if you could turn your camera on, please. How are you this evening? Can I hear you? Is your audio working or your mic? Anyone else have any questions while we're waiting for this resident? I don't see any, so.
Is he trying to call in?
I think so. I'm not sure that's going to work, but especially with the video.
Hey, can you guys hear me now?
Now I got you. Okay.
Uh, perfect, thanks.
For the record, did you please state your name and address, please?
Sure, Ed Tang, thirty-six Holly Drive, where the neighbor to the right.
Uh, we are currently open for questions of Mr. Keller. Do you have a question you'd like to ask?
Yeah, I just want to understand what the steep slope disturbance changes, um, what that means for um, like just downhill water and and drainage for, you know, the the residents, you know, downhill from from the house.
Yeah, that'll have, uh, that'll have no impact at all since we're, we're, water will still be intercepted at the driveway to just move further away from your house and will be intercepted prior to uh, the increase in runoff. Any increase in runoff resulting from the increase in impervious would be picked up um, uh, before it enters Holly Drive and routed through a dry well or other groundwater recharge device. The um, if the, if this board would approve the variances, we would be required to get a grading permit uh, as well as a tree replacement or tree removal permit. Um, and those two entities, especially engineering, would ensure that there was no negative impact on any of the surrounding properties. So all of the uh, all of the measures we've taken have been to ensure that there's absolutely no change to the direction of existing flows and nothing more will come on your property. Uh, and certainly anything that comes down the driveway will be picked up in uh, inlets and routed through dry wells and manipulated uh, and stored so that it has no negative impact on anyone down there.
Thanks for that. I just want to note, you know, the um, there's a lot of runoff coming down the hill, uh, especially uh, we, we've had to, we've had to, you know, manage uh, the guys behind us, there's a Russian guy behind us. I think he he regularly, regularly gets pretty big pools of water after rainfall in the back. Um, so I I think the driveway and the dry wells, that 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 does help, but we we do see a fair bit of runoff from the top of the hill. Just something to note while you guys are planning.
It's, it's a steep area and there's no stormwater drainage in Holly because it's at the top of the hill. So we are aware that we will have to uh, meet the rather stringent requirements of the stormwater management ordinance administered by the engineering department. But we're happy to do so. It'll be better for the neighborhood.
Great. One other question is, is it, and we don't know, um, but uh, is it, is it customary to get analysis done for the, our trees? Uh, or is it basically the, the only assessment made by, by the, you know, by the, by the, by the new house?
The um, with regard, your trees are anywhere from the s- the centers of the trees are anywhere from two to five feet on your property. We're actually moving um, our curbing away from yours and then about three to five, six feet away from the existing line. So about eight to ten feet away from your trees uh, where the existing driveway is, we're going to be uh, putting in a retaining wall. So the way those roots grow and they're so much higher than the existing driveway, there should be no root impact. And we've had our arborist look at them. Um, now, once as part of any grading permit application, when we submit to the township, the first stop is the town forester. And the town forester's job is also to ensure that um, any of our work will not have a detrimental impact on your tree. So um, whether, if you want to have an in, uh, an assessment done, that's fine. But certainly, we've taken a look at it and there is a a forester and an assistant forester that would be required to approve uh, or deny any uh, tree replacement plan. And that includes the protection of existing perimeter trees.
Got it, thanks. Well, last question, I know, I I, again, this, you know, we're, we're a layperson when it comes to this stuff. When you say the, the house requires a uh, height variance, does that mean the house is taller than usual, which will block more light? Or I I understand, I heard people say that the driveway is being lowered. So does that, does that mean that the, the house's height is um, like not increasing and the, but the, but it's being lowered to, I I didn't fully understand. Is the house higher than usual? I guess that's my question.
No, the ordinance uh, in Melbourne exists in two parts. One is that from the average grade around the perimeter. Um, and it's, it's a very conservative uh, calculation to determine that. From there, you can go thirty-five feet up to the highest ridge. So if we held the garage and first floor where it is, the house would have been completely compliant. And so certainly in terms of, and and again, as indicated by the architect, your house is pretty much lateral. While we're a little bit higher, we're not much higher. Um, but uh, and and because of the curve, you actually start to fade, you start to pull away from uh, from the common line. But in terms of that, um, where we pick up the, the grade changes, as you indicated, because we're dropping the driveway to make it softer, that uh, maximum from minimum to the minimum to maximum, so low point to the high point can't exceed thirty-five feet by any more than five feet. So our limit, the low point to the high point is forty feet. Uh, we don't comply with that. So we comply with the average grade, which is the primary part of the ordinance. But because we're lowering that section, and again, it's an area where you won't see it uh, because it's nestled into retaining walls. We're not changing the grade along the property. We're dropping the grade in there. So you'll never see the fact that that garage floor dropped three feet. Um, so the house will appear to be fully compliant with the height ordinances, both in terms from your perspective, it'll appear both from average grade to peak as well as low point to high point. You won't see any difference.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I I don't really get the full back. Right now, our upper yard is basically level with the other, the, the yard exists. So does that mean the yard, the other yard is going to be dropped down or does that mean that the So does that mean the yard, the other yard is going to be dropped down? Or does that mean that the, yeah. Maybe that's a dumb question.
Yes, so, so anywhere.
Because there's no fencing, there's no fencing behind, everyone's yards in, on this area are all, no one's, no one's fenced in, it's basically an open area, so.
Similar to what we did, you know, we did the grading for your property. And similar to what we did where we carved out an area that's, your backyard is lower than the side yards. The same thing will happen here. So the, your backyard will step up to this high yard. And then we'll drop back down into the driveway. And then we'll also drop back into the, into the retained area. So it's all nestling into the landscape so that it minimizes its impact. So very similar, you know, it's, it's kind of crazy sometimes that you have a high point between the two properties that maintains visibility and privacy. And then we have retaining walls that will drop back into our site. So from your perspective, you won't see the retaining walls, you won't see the backyard development because it's all being carved into the existing land and dropped. And again, because we're doing that, we're not raising, we can't possibly kick any water onto your property. In fact, we're actually taking more water onto our property than used to go. And some of the water in the back used to sheet towards you. Now we're actually directing that into our own property where we'll pick it up. So, yes, we are carving down, but it's to your benefit because you'll never see it.
Yeah, but we might need to install fencing if there's small children running around the yard between, between yards.
My clients, at this point, whether there's, there are plans to tentatively fence the property, certainly if they do a pool, they'll need to fence the property. If they don't do a pool, they won't need to fence the property, but it's pretty tough to get up into that area. But certainly, you know, the, the retaining walls would have a, they would have a fence along the top of them regardless. So if you're worried about your kids coming across the property line and dropping down a wall, there would be a security fence three to four feet back from the retaining wall. And so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be an issue there. If they don't do the, and that's whether they do the pool or not. So the, the limbs also have small children. So they certainly want to make sure these walls are safe for them as well.
Great, thanks. No further questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Do not see any hands raised. So I will close the public portion of the meeting. Any comments from the board? Wolfgang.
No, in listening to Mr. Keller's testimony and in having viewed the site log and looking over the plans, I think it's a very, I think it's a very tasteful, it's a very clever use of the land. I think it's a very thoughtful design. I think, you know, have you seen the pictures of what was there before? I think this is going to be a good addition to the neighborhood. I don't think there's going to be anything. I don't think it's out of scale at all with what's in the neighborhood. And I think it's going to be a, I think it's going to be a positive addition.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree with Wolfgang. I mean, I, I think this meets a criteria of C1 or C2 variance. You know, when I, when I drove up to the property, I, I had trouble actually finding it at first because there's no longer a house there. I mean, it is really, really steep, that topography. And I think that they're making very good use of the property with this plan. And I like that, you know, the only two variances that they're seeking are for building height and steep slope and that they're not looking for FAR or anything else. They've really, they've really done a great job in my opinion, and they've, they've made this house work with a, with a tough lot. And I think it'll absolutely be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, you know, looking at the houses next door and the houses on the street. You know, so I could support this application.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just if I could clarify that I'm supportive on the basis of a hardship variance.
Thank you. Anyone have any other comments? So one of the things with the steep slope ordinance in our town is that it's a fixed thousand feet. And the larger your lot, the more detrimental that ordinance becomes. So as if you're an R5 with 14,000 square foot lot, you wind up with a 6.8% available for steep slope disturbance. This lot with 22,314 square feet, it only have 4.4% of the lot steep slope disturbance for, to meet the thousand square foot criteria, which is rather small considering the topography of this lot. So I too would agree that there is a definite C1 hardship here as it pertains to topography. As for the building height, it's clear why that is the case based on this, this unusual topography. So I would support this application as well. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Second by Wolfgang.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that that's based on a, a C1 analysis as was articulated by the various board members.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Thank you, you're muted, Joe.
Joe?
He's muted.
Joe, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Jessica Blat?
Yes.
Craig Plaitner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you. All the best.
Next up, you have calendar 384521. David and Natalie Reichman at 29 Jefferson Avenue.
Rich, you're on this one as well? You're muted, Rich. You're on this though, right?
Yes, I am. John James also, Ed Clark.
Okay.
And Natalie and/or David Reichman.
I think I have David.
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Keller, please speak more slowly. I'll have to get Mr. Simon after you. Hello, are we ready for this?
Just waiting for Mr. Clark to turn on his camera and unmute himself.
Hello.
Very good.
Raise your right hand, please. Anyone who's going to testify. It's great to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So if you're adding a matter of pending.
Do.
Yes, thank you. We have your name, please, and spell it.
My name is Natalie Reichman.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Natalie Reichman. And you would like the spelling?
Please.
It's N A T A L I E, and the last name is R E I C H M A N.
Yes.
And David Reichman? D A V I D, same last name.
Thank you.
And what else do we have testifying tonight?
We got John James.
John James, architect, J A M E S. Thank you.
Edward Clark, go ahead.
Edward Clark. E W A R D C L A R K, landscape architect.
And.
Excuse me, where's, where's Mr. Clark? Raise your hand, Ed. Oh, left. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And Rich Keller.
All right, so who would like to start?
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalie Reichman. This is my husband, David Reichman. And we are here today to talk about the variances for our new home at 29 Jefferson Avenue. We've been living in Melbourne in the South Mountain neighborhood since 2014. And we love our neighborhood and we moved here with two kids. And since then have added a third and a COVID puppy to our family. And so as we've expanded, we started to look around to stay in this neighborhood that we love so much, but to look around for a property with a larger yard for our family. And we felt really lucky when we found the property at 29 Jefferson Ave. And once construction was underway in that project, which we really hope will be our forever home here. We realized that what we thought was a backyard was a, another front yard property facing the Madison Terrace side of, of, of the property. So that became the hardship that we had to deal with in developing the property. So we are here today to talk about the plans that we've made. And our hope is really to develop the property so that we can have our forever backyard, but also doing so while respecting the privacy of our neighbors. And, and just respecting the neighborhood and making sure that we leave Madison Terrace feeling even more private than it feels right now. And, and also just to that point that our property at the, on the Madison Terrace side ends quite a few feet before the curb. And our goal when we present this plan is not only to plant trees around our property, but also to take care of the remaining property all the way to the curb of Madison Terrace. And we've asked John James and Ed Clark and Rich Keller to help us with the planning here. So I will turn it over to them. I believe that John will start and, and hopefully they can lay this out for all of you to review.
Thank you very much, John. Will you please indulge the board with your credentials?
I have a Bachelor of Science in Architecture from University of Virginia, a Master's in Architecture from Columbia University. I maintain my registrations in New Jersey, New York and Connecticut. Presented before about 50 different boards in the state of New Jersey and before this board on numerous occasions. And all my licenses are currently active.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
So we're here tonight because we have a through lot on two streets in Melbourne. And I want to share my screen here. And I'm going to first of all refer to Rich Keller's variance application site plan. And on the site plan, you can see the location drawing that shows property in question right here. It's on Jefferson Avenue. And Madison Terrace turns off of Jefferson Avenue and is a small cul-de-sac right behind this property. This is a similar condition to the adjacent property to the left, which is a through lot. And then there's a corner property which goes through, but also is corner. So it has two front yards and only one side yard. We're fortunate to have two side yards as well as two front yards. We're also lucky that it's a very deep lot. And so it gives us plenty of room to do what we're proposing. Jefferson Avenue is obviously the main road. Madison Terrace is obviously a much smaller cul-de-sac, only has a few driveways that come off of it. And it has at least four to five other properties that also have the same condition where it's a non-front yard facing on Madison Terrace. So it's not an unusual circumstance for that particular road. We set up the house so that it does face Jefferson Avenue. It has the garage and the kitchen, both towards the north side of the property. And the bottom edge is pretty closer to being the south side of the property. And so the garage is located here, the kitchen's in the back corner. We developed the patio and a pool and a pool house directly behind that. Because there's nowhere else to put any of the normal backyard amenities, we're here at the board tonight asking for a variance for all the accessory structures that would normally be located in a backyard. And Rich is going to go over all the variances with you further, but pretty much it includes patio, it includes a pergola, it includes a fire pit, it includes a pool, and includes a pool house. And we've located these, most of these amenities directly behind the kitchen. And it uses the pool house as like a bookend to kind of hide all of these items from the secondary street here, which is Madison Terrace. So the pool is here in the middle. The pool house is located directly behind it. And it's set right on the axis with the pool. So it really does screen the pool from the roadway. And the intention here is to give more privacy, not only to the Reichmans, but also to any of the neighbors so that the pool house screens these amenities. Um, so we're trying to use the pool house as the main screen, but we're also trying to minimize the size of the pool house. And there's several things that we did here. First of all, we kind of divided it into three different pieces. So you have the central main room and you have two service wings. And this keeps it from being one large volume and makes it three smaller volumes. A principal one in the middle that faces the pool and two side service wings on the edges. The second thing we did is we used a hip roof design here so that the edge of the roof starts at about nine feet above the pool decking here, and it slopes up in the middle and it only reaches the maximum height of 18 feet for four feet of the pool house. And it actually only reaches that maximum height if you go to the very lowest corner that's screened. And so the rest of the roofs are much lower than that. It's four and a half, excuse me, three and a half feet lower than that on the pool side. And then the two side roofs are an additional two feet lower than that. But we're maintaining that nine-foot eve line along the edges. So that gives you the principal wall. And the roof slope back so that they actually seem less in height than they truly are. Ed's going to talk more later on and he's going to show you some renderings. You can see how this works in the renderings and Rich is going to talk more about the coverages as well. But the other positive here is that we do have a small storage area over here. And where, where we have a deeper part, we're going to dig down a basement, we're going to enclose all the pool equipment and we're going to move that inside so that that's a real amenity for both the Reichmans and the neighbors to have that in an enclosed space as opposed to out in the open. All of the materials of the pool house are going to be matching the main house. It's going to have the same decorative asphalt shingle roof. It will have shingle siding and it will have a stone base, which further breaks up the height of the structure and gives it a much lower and more horizontal look. It includes an open room that faces towards the pool house and a closed wall on the back, which is a backdrop for Ed's landscaping plan there. Rich is going to talk about it later, but everything that we're proposing here from a building point of view and from a coverage point of view is totally compliant if this was to be considered backyard. And I think that when we look back on the site plan and we see the other three yards, it's a very natural location for this adjacent to the neighbor here. And next to the other neighbor here, it's a very normal backyard development. There's nothing excessive about it. There's nothing that's over any of the coverages or allowable metrics. It's really the issue that we have a, a secondary road back here. And the secondary road has a curve to it so that our pool house is closer one corner than it is at the other corner. So the corner straight back along the center line of the street is approximately 47 feet. And at the narrowest point here at the corner is 26.05 feet. And that's due to the sharp curve of Madison Terrace. If you look at this from a location point of view and a sun angle point of view, you know, the sun comes up over here in the east, it goes around the bottom of the page and continues over here to the west. And so the pool is ideally located to be here to get some sun because it's further away from the plantings along this property line. So it's going to allow sunlight to come over the very, very large shade trees. One thing you'll notice here is Rich and Ed are both going to talk more about, is there a lot of mature trees along the right of way along Madison Terrace? All of those mature trees are going to be maintained so that that high story canopy is there. And we're going to be doing a significant amount of under story screening so that everyone has the proper amount of privacy that's necessary for this front yard. Other than seeing a driveway here, when this is landscaped, you wouldn't be able to tell whether it was a front yard or backyard. And all of these new accessory structures in the backyard which now have to be approved by the board because it is a front yard technically, will be screened from the street and from the neighbors. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ed unless there are questions that you want to ask me first. He has some renderings and landscape plans to show, and then Rich is going to talk more about the planning aspects of the project. He has some renderings and landscape plans to show, and then Rich is going to talk more about the planning aspects of the project.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask clarif- question, question?
Absolutely.
Hey, John, when, if you, when, can you just go back to your sheet that shows the elevations? Yeah.
Yes.
Just because, just because, so the record is clear and only because this is a through lot application as you've identified it. When you refer to the front elevation and the rear elevation, starting with the front elevation, is that the elevation that is facing Madison?
No, that is the elevation that is facing the house.
Okay, so the
The true, we we labeled it as the front yard elevation essentially versus the backyard elevation.
Okay, so when when you're showing number five.
Number five is the Madison Terrace elevation.
Okay, that's what I wanted to to clarify so that the public and the board is aware of that. So what, when we're looking at rear elevation number five, that's what someone's going to see from Madison.
Yes, that's the elevation that's facing Madison, but you're not going to see it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, John, I have another quick thing to clarify. Part of the variance relief on attachment is looking for pool equipment in the front yard. You said the pool equipment is going to be mounted in the basement.
We are now going to put the pool equipment inside the pool house. So it's no longer going to be required as a separate variance because it's going to be enclosed.
Okay, so you will not be seeking that?
No, we will not.
Okay. So then you're down to the two. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions for Mr. James? You can stop sharing. From the word, I don't see any. Any questions from the attendees for Mr. John James? I don't see any there either. So who is next?
Um, Ed Clark's going to speak next.
Okay, Mr. Clark, would you please indulge the board with your credentials?
Sure. My name's Ed Edward Clark from Edward Clark Landscape Architect, three sixty-two Route two oh six, Flanders, New Jersey. I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in landscape architecture. I've been a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-seven. Given testimony through multiple municipalities throughout New York and New Jersey. Planning boards, Board of Adjustments, Historic Preservation Committees. Designed in Oakland, we're on the co-chairman and have been of the Oakland Shade Tree Commission and serves in advisory to the Oakland Planning Board and Board of Adjustments.
Thank you. Is your license currently in good standing?
It is.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good, thank you.
Are you screen sharing?
I am.
Okay.
Doing this on a, on an iPad for the first time. My speaker on my laptop's not working.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, does it make sense to maybe move on to Mr. Keller?
That's what I say. Also, Mr. Clark, does any of the other professionals have your portion that they can share?
Um, I'm doing it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to share and have Ed talk about it?
That would be fine if if you can do that.
Thank you.
Hey.
The rear yard landscape plan would be where to start.
Okay. Let me just pull it on up here.
You got it.
Okay, so why don't we provide a foundation as to what we're looking at? As I assume that this has not been provided to the board before this evening.
That's correct.
So first off, are we, we talking about numerous sheets here? How many sheets?
There'll be.
You want me to read them off of here for you? It's going to be landscaping plans L one and L two. L one is the front yard and L two is the rear yard. And then it's going to be three sheets of plant materials. And then it's going to be four renderings of the site.
Okay.
So a total of nine drawings.
Very good. So I think for identification purposes, we'll just identify the nine drawings in one set as a one. But as you're going through them, Mr. Clark, if you can just identify what drawing you're referring to. And then I assumed it is, did you prepare this nine drawing set?
Yes.
And when did you prepare it?
The date on it, I believe it's today's day.
Twenty twenty-one.
What is it?
Oh, well, there's a revised date.
What's, what's the latest revision date?
One.
One twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one. So if you could just scroll towards Madison. Okay, okay. So the focus will be on the the rear yard landscape plan. And we we've provided screening on all sides of the property, the two neighbors as well as Madison. Uh, one of the things to note is you'll know from your site visit, there's a great stand of existing trees along Madison. In this drawing, the rear landscape plan, they're represented in in the elevation as that ghosted in graphic there. And on the plan view, there are those just simple black circles. So those represent the existing, the existing sweet gums mainly that are on the site. The screening on the side yard is pretty straightforward. It's a green, green giant arboviti on the north property line, which will be maintained. The design intent is that it's maintained in a hedge-like manner. The screening on the south side of the property is a little more informal. And that's based on the the grades on that side have a little undulation to them. And it's a mix of Norway spruce and green giant arboviti. So all all conifers, foliage twelve months out of the year. I'd like to talk a little bit about the screening on the Madison side, particularly from the back of the pool house to the edge of Madison Terrace. If we start on the elevation above at Madison Terrace, you can see that the topography lends some screening itself from Madison. And the plan between Madison and the fence line, and the fence line is shown ten feet off the property line. The the intent on the Madison side of the fence is to create sort of a stylized woodland-style planting. Informal masses. It's all evergreen material. There's a mix of green giant arbovitis for height. Their spec is seven to eight foot at install. And tearing down in front of those and interweaving in front of those, there's masses of native verdant dendron and leather leaf viburnum. So it'll have a layered effect. All three of those plants with respect are evergreen. The green giants are trees. The rhododendrons and viburnums have more of a shrub build to them. And I'll show some images of this plant material shortly. So that's the condition on the on the Madison side of the fence. We have this under-story feel we're creating. And the intent, unlike the hedge up by the pool, the intent is that this will become a more naturalized planting and sort of revert back to a woodland setting, which is sort of what it is now, a semi-wooded setting. But we're now introducing an under-story which will provide twelve-month screening for Madison. If we work our way up the hill from the fence line on the the backyard side of the fence, we've gone to taller evergreens. So there's a mix of white pine, Norway spruce. There's more green giant arbovitis. And these are trees that grow about a foot a year. They'll start, uh, the green giants are spec the seven to eights. The Norway spruce are at six to sevens and the white pines, the fastest growing of the group, respective five to six. So again, in this informal arrangement, and the intent being that we'll let that reverberate to a taller level of screening. And then as we work our way up to the pool house itself, um, on the, um, if you were looking out at the house, on the on the left side of the pool house, there's a sugar maple tree, which provide a voluminous canopy. Not an evergreen, but will provide the substantial cover from further cover from Madison. The balance of the backyard is against the house is just a traditional foundation plan. But it's really the the screening I wanted to talk a little bit about. If we could go down to the the plant images. So the 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 top three photos are typical photos of Norway spruce. So photo number two, about the size you would expect at the install, um, and the shape at the install. Photo number three is, as the years go on, there's less pruning. The the tree becomes more naturalized in its shape. And that, I would expect our trees to look like the tree in number three after about twelve to fifteen years. And then, um, so that that's the Norway spruce, which are mainly on the yard side of the fence, the taller, the taller screening tree. Below it is a sugar maple in its summer color and its fall color. That's the voluminous canopy tree I mentioned. That would be off to the side of the pool house. And if you can scroll down to the next sheet of images. Thank you. So all of these are green giant arboviti. So frame number nine represents the look they would have at install. Frame number ten and twelve, that represents what we're going to have as screening along the north property side. This plant can either be left alone or it can be hedged. We want a more formal look, uh, up on the north side. So that's what you see in ten and twelve. And then, uh, frame thirteen is what the design intent is for the arboviti we're planting along Madison Terrace. Where they're not sheared, they're just let go. In this area, they'll generally max out in a thirty, forty-foot range. And again, just let them re-naturalize and have that irregular margin. If you can scroll down to the next plant image board. Thanks. So I, as I mentioned, on the Madison Terrace side, between the proposed six-foot solid fence and the edge of Madison Terrace, we'll have the arbovitis, but then we'll step down to a shrub layer. And based on the shade created by the existing trees and trying to create an appearance of something that is native to the area. We have native rhododendrons, which are truly native in blocks, irregular leaf-shaped masses of five to seven plants at a clip. We we've spec those as an install height of four to five foot. And then mixed in, as you can see in number twenty and twenty-one, is leather leaf viburnum, which has a similar leaf shape. Not uncommon to see them in around town in the, you know, twelve-foot range. So frame twenty is what they might look like on install. Frame twenty-one, it's it's in the hedge there is what it might look like about six to seven years down the road. Uh, another fast-growing shrub. And then lastly is number twenty-two, which is white pine. And that's going to be on the yard side of the fence, native tree, maintain heights of eighty to a hundred feet. Grow a little over foot a year. Frame twenty-two is what it might look like at install. And then, uh, the frame to the right is, as it grows over the years and we, it's not sheared anymore. Gets a more natural appearance. So the end product is a stylized version of a natural woodland between the back lawn, back of the pool house and Madison Terrace. We've just incorporated more evergreens to get that twelve-month screening. Go to one of the renderings, probably probably go to the, keep going. Okay, so that's going, keep going. Okay, so that that is, um, that's good. So that, that's looking from the house out. We've represented the existing canopy, which is to remain. And then you can see the the plantings that will screen, uh, further screen on the yard side of the fence. That's where our height's going to come from, the maples, the Norway spruce and the white pine.
Mr. Clark, let me interrupt just for one second. I apologize. These, now you're up to as part of a one, a series of renderings. Were these renderings done by you or under your supervision?
Yes, they were.
Okay, and you and you represented they accurately depict how the property is going to look once, once constructed.
That's correct. The modeling program we use builds it off of the AutoCAD drafted plans of the site plan and the landscape plan and the architectures.
Thank you.
Okay.
You were hunting for Ed, sorry.
So lastly, this is, um, what we, what we're going for. The design intent of the screen from the Matt, as viewed from Madison Terrace. So in the back, you can see what will be a a board-on-board style fence. No finials, flat top, um, painted a muted color. And then the arboviti masses and then layering down in front of that, the masses of leather leaf viburnum and native rhododendron. So this is the, this is the, the de- design intent of the end product for the screening. There any questions on landscape plan?
Stop sharing this, uh, if you could. Any questions from the board for the landscape architect? Any questions from the audience for the landscape architect? I see none. Mr. Keller, is it your time, your portion of the show?
Yes, that's correct.
Your qualifications?
I'm a licensed civil engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, licensed as an engineer in nineteen eighty-nine and as a planner in nineteen ninety. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a concentration in water resources and environmental.
You have to speak louder, Mr. Keller. Sorry.
No problem. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a concentration in water resources and environmental engineering. And I held a Master's Degree in Architecture with a concentration in urban planning and design. And that's from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I also taught for approximately eleven years. Appeared before approximately a hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey as both planner and engineer. And my licenses are in good effect.
Thank you. Your qualifications are accepted. Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm going to, uh, start out sharing screen with our variance application plan that I think John showed before. But I'm going to just go over a couple of minor modifications to it. First, as indicated by John, the property is thirty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-three square feet. So it's just under one acre. And it's in the R three residential zone where twenty-nine thousand square feet is required. So it is an oversized lot. Uh, it is three hundred and thirty feet deep. Um, and it is a hundred and twenty feet wide. And as indicated, it has frontages on both Jefferson Avenue and Madison Terrace, the smaller cul-de-sac street. Actually, there's no cul-de-sac. It just ends the the smaller street to the rear. Don't belabor the point as indicated by by John. Because we have no rear yard and accessory structures are only permitted in rear yard. Means by ordinance, we're not allowed to any accessory structures on a, on a nearly one-acre property. So clearly, uh, this, it's, while it's not completely unique, it is, um, it is more on the rare side in the township to have through lots. It's not anticipated or covered by our ordinance like corner lots are. And so accordingly, any accessory structure on this property needs to come to the Board of Adjustment for approval. The applicant is proposing to construct a accessory structures between the house and accessory structures between the house and Madison Terrace, which we've been calling the rear yard. We know it's front yard. Uh, we're calling it a rear yard. There's an existing house that's under construction. That house was placed at the eighty six point six foot average setback. So in honoring the average setback to Jefferson Avenue means the house race basically got pushed back into the middle of the site, which means our rear yard uh starts to throttle down and we had limited spots to put uh to put accessory structures. Uh, we're proposing uh, I think, what are normal or typical accessory structures associated with a one acre lot? That's a pool, a pool house, patios and other accessory structures. And because we're doing the pool, we'll also need a fence around that for security by code. So we need a front yard fence. Uh, in addition to the front yard accessory structures and as indicated, the previously noticed variance for uh pool equipment in the front yard uh has been withdrawn since we've elected to put the pool equipment uh in in one of the two enclosed portions of the cabana. The cabana again um being basically placed with its uh back, although it's an attractive back with lots of landscaping uh to Madison Terrace. And it really means that it acts as any activity that occurs within the in the covered patio portion. Um, the really the noise is projected back toward the house as opposed to uh accessory uh uses occurring on the patio and pushing out. So the covered patio actually uh in addition to the generous landscape plan does provide for sound attenuation uh and uh and focuses the activities back into the property. I would point out on our plan, um we showed perimeter plantings with a fence on the property line. Obviously, this has been superseded by uh the landscape plan that was uh prepared by Mr. Clark. Where that fence moves in ten feet. And then there's generous landscaping um on the property as understory to the trees um that occur between the right away. And the Madison Terrace um uh edge of pavement. And all of those are scheduled to be uh uh maintained. There are other high branched as as Ed Clark indicated, a lot of sweetgums in there. Uh, and they'll be supplemented with not these, but the plan that Mr. Clark showed, which was a generous layering of evergreen. Uh, primarily evergreen uh plant materials or all evergreen plant materials in that area. As uh as indicated. Um, we are fully compliant. The lot is not an undersized lot. It's fully compliant with lot area and lot width. Obviously, no depth is required, but uh one in the zone, no depth is required because we don't have a rear yard. Uh, so there is no metric for that. Um, but we are, if you measure the distance between the two streets, you're almost three hundred and forty feet or a hundred and seventy five feet is required. It can form to the front setback um with regard to the the house complies with the uh setback to Madison Avenue. We are um under on building coverage, including with the proposed cabana. We're under on lot coverage. By considerable now, so under we're under building coverage by, I'm sorry, we're under um lot coverage by more than three thousand square feet. We're under the FAR uh by approximately nineteen hundred and fifty square feet, and that includes the uh the cabana. Um, we are fully compliant with FAR. Uh, we meet all the side yard requirements and the building height is seventeen point eight six and that is measured from the back. So we're certainly um a- at its very highest seen, it is uh that the um cabana is uh fully in conformance. We added these two sections down uh at the bottom to show if the lot were not a through lot, which means if Madison Terrace was part of another lot, and this was a standard lot. We wanted to show that we're not overdeveloping the property and that the accessory coverage, if that was a rear yard would be fully compliant, that'd be well under where twenty percent is permitted, we'd be at thirteen point seven percent. And rear and occupied minimum twenty five percent is required, we're up at thirty seven point six. So clearly, this is not an overdevelopment of the site. If we were to subdivide off one foot of property along the right away and give it to one of our two neighbors, we'd be a standard lot, not a through lot, we'd be fully conforming. Um, the idea was not to overdevelop the property, but to develop in a manner that's consistent with a one acre property in the R three zone with the amenities that are again uh traditional and customary to the uh uh to the R three zone. I will share two other uh exhibits. So Rob, I didn't mark down. Uh, the first one I'm gonna show is gonna be um an aerial photograph.
So that'll be a two.
Okay, so what we've done is this is annotated aerial photo. It is near my near map image. Uh, the date is March twenty one, not two twenty one, March twenty one, two thousand and twenty one. It was prepared by in my office over the weekend. And what we did is we took an ortho rectified photograph, it means it's to scale. Um, and we superimposed the the proposed lot development. And what we are looking to show is that it was very carefully designed. Uh, we very carefully selected the location of the accessory structures, given that Jefferson is our front yard, Madison is the rear yard. Uh, we've got two properties across the street from us, the lots number six and seven, which is, I believe that's a I can read it, that's uh street number twenty and twenty six, those are both owned by uh Joe Feldman, a client of mine. Um, the next property is actually a through lot that goes all the way up to Parsonage Hill Road. It actually has a driveway that comes across an easement. They actually have very little frontage on Madison. They have a courtyard house that's set back. Um, that is eighteen Madison Terrace. And note that the um the accessory structures have been basically lined. So they align up with the property boundary. They don't sit right in front of either Mr. Feldman's two properties or in front of the property at eighteen Madison. Uh, we've moved the accessory structures as far as ways we could get from the house of twenty five, which is John indicated was the property with two front yards and and only one side yard. And as was indicated, um we've put the accessory structures as far away as we can. And along that common property line, we'll be infilling that area with an evergreen arborvitae, uh green giant arborvitae hedge. That will grow up and provide additional visual protection. We also wanted to make sure that we were as far the next door, the next lot to us at thirty three Jefferson is also a through lot, similar condition. There's a freestanding garage uh back. We wanted to pull away from that garage. We weren't interfer- inter affected by shadow or shade of that. Uh, that does not meet the twelve foot setback. Uh, and we're more than a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty feet from our closest part of the cabana to the Haverstick residence at twenty five Madison Terrace. So we're very careful in the placement of of the of the accessory structures. Um, one of the overarching uh requirements or mandates by the Reichmans was they wanted to be uh good neighbors. They wanted privacy. They don't want people seeing them and they don't want um the neighbor seeing their either their structures, their pool, or certainly being uh inconvenienced by the sound. And that's why there's such a generous landscape plan. You can see on this plan, we did show the fa- the fence ten feet back. Uh, and the planting is layered on both sides back. If I go to the other exhibit I have. This is a photo exhibit, five annotated site and context photos for the Reichman um application.
So this is gonna be, Rich, this is gonna be A three.
Yep. All photos uh were taken by myself on January twenty first, except as noted, I have one uh Google Street View that I've added. If we run through the photos quickly, this is the property from Mattis Terrace, Madison Terrace, looking southeast from the street. So you can see the house under construction. You can see we've staked out the property line. And so from that property line, all of these trees that you see in here are to remain from the property line to a distance of ten feet back uh will be where all of the evergreen understory uh layered understory is between the um the green giants and the rhododendrons and the other flowering shrubs. Uh, that's where that natural understory force is being developed. And those continue up onto the higher part of the site. So those plants that then go on the other side of the fence are planted even higher. So even though they're planted a slight slightly smaller size, so they'll grow faster. They're aided by the fact that they're a few feet up, so they will continue to mask any view of the uh of the cabana and will give a very framed and mostly included um limited views of just small portions of the fence when when initially planted. Taking a look the other direction, looking towards the southwest from the street. You can see that is the neighbor's house on the adjacent property, also a through lot and their garage, which we're looking to stay away from since it's only a foot or two off property line. And there's the Haverstick residence with mature green uh evergreen landscaping a hundred and fifty feet away from our proposed uh structure. We also um a couple of years ago, we did an application for a property with three front yards um and one side yard at Del Barton Drive. And I brought I brought this one just to show the effect of the screening of those uh combination of green giants, pine and Norway spruces um that they have here. We have a pool that's been approved in the side yard by the board of adjustment. Um, and you can see this is from the uh the intersection. Uh, this is a three sided lot, so at the intersection of Del Barton is in the front, Kennelworth is on the right and wraps around into Oaklawn on the left. But you can see that the landscaping is such that you can never see that there's a pool or even there's a fence back in that area. If I go to the next photograph, coming further up Kennelworth Drive with uh Woodfield up on the right, so I've ju- I've moved past Del Barton. You can see again, um there is a stockade fence and that's actually just about two or three feet off the line with a row of jo- of uh of green giant uh arborvitae in front. And then some street trees in front of that. We have the benefit on our property of having existing uh trees in the street. So certainly, uh what we're planning is a much more dense and layered uh application. Uh, you can't see the fence on this one. If you stop and look, you can probably get a small view of the stockade tents at some points, but for the most part, you'd never know there's a fence back there. And then finally, um just to show that this is not unusual, not not common, but not completely unusual. I have a Google Street View on photograph number five. This is along Parsonage Hill Road. Um, we're uh the left side, we're looking west on Parsonage Hill. Um, we've got L's Way comes in on the right. And there are five or six properties that run between uh from Parsonage Hill from Joanna Way up to Stewart Road in the distance where these are through lots, where they front on uh primarily the houses front and face on Joanna, but the backyards all face on Parsonage Hill. And so it's not uncommon, but what we have in in our instance is we have a much better layering of plant material in that we will be um, we'll be getting, the fence will be set back ten feet and we'll be getting landscape material on both sides of that fence. So it'll be a much more effective job of screening than exists currently. And I have to say, although I notice that fence sometimes, for the most part, I, you know, on a highly traveled road, you really don't see it. So with proper landscaping, you can really make that fence disappear. Some areas it's more visible and others, but it just shows that uh this is not completely unusual in town. Uh, and we actually have a much better application in the way we're screening it. So if I um if I stop my screen share. Um, we clearly see this as a C one variance where the uh where by reason of an extraordinary exceptional situation affecting the specific piece of property uh or the structures lawfully thereon. Uh, the strict application of zoning ordinance would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulty or hardship on the owner of the property in developing this this uh site in a manner that's consistent with the neighborhood. Um, and uh and the R three zone in general. Uh, it's an unusual condition of of a lot having no rear yard status, uh having no rear yard. Sorry, this unusual condition, having no rear yard, we think satisfies the negative criteria in support of the variance relief under C one. Under the negative criteria, again, uh we need to demonstrate that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. And there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Um, we believe that there is no detriment to the public good or the purposes of the master plan. Uh, accessory structures have been placed where they'll have a minimal uh effect on neighboring properties. The pool house creates a physical barrier and projects sound away from Madison Terrace. The applicant, uh the pool equipment has been placed in the basement. Uh, the house, um the um the roof line of the full structure, the pool house has been designed to minimize the i- impact or view of the mass. It's actually considerably lower um than the allowable height. Um, when you consider from three sides and it doesn't exceed the site from the height from the backside. There's no impairment to the enjoyment of air light, light and open space to the neighboring properties. Do the very careful placement of the accessory structures. And as we indicated, it's clearly not an overdevelopment of the property. Uh, as indicated, if it was not a through lot, we'd be fully compliant with the ordinance in every respect. I would point out, uh both uh the Reichmans and I have consulted with Feldman, who owns two properties across the street. I by phone, uh the Reichmans and Purpose. Um, they wished us luck and we're happy to see the landscape, uh the landscaping we're providing. Um, with regard to the master plan, I see no, nothing that's contrary to the master plan. Again, this is encouraging appropriate uh master plan uh goal on page forty three. It was two thousand and eighteen master plan. Encourages the appropriate land uses that promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality. And objective one point oh one is to protect the character of established residential neighborhoods and encourage land use and development at an appropriate scale and density. We actually think that this is understated elegant. Um, it's a benefit. We lost a lot of the big estate homes in the twenties and the thirties after the depression. Um, I'm always awaited to see a client who's looking to restore um some of the grandeur to a home. Uh, but due to a constrained matter and a strain ma- a matter that's um appreciative of the neighborhood and the neighbor's concerns. And I think uh uh this embodies it. Um, both the landscaping plan, I think, uh will clearly do the job. I think Mr. James has been very careful in also minimizing mass. We think it's a great application, obviously, if this board approves it. Uh, we already have an existing grading plan that was approved. We would uh and we accommodated any future um landscape uh accessory structures. But we would certainly need an update to the grading plan and we would provide that. And uh Mr. Clark's plans would serve as the basis for any revisions to the uh tree removal or tree replacement plan. We think it's a great plan and we hope that you approve.
Quick question, Rich. Um, how how do you plan on building this building? Any access from Jefferson or from Madison Terrace?
Um, well, we still have access. It's a construction site, so we still have access from both streets. So there's no reason we can't. Uh Natalie, Natalie is a um father is the is the super and when Natalie's dad got uh under the weather, Natalie became the uh the site contractor. So Natalie can certainly um can update that, but you know, look, it, we do have frontage on Madison. The idea is to close that off. We certainly don't want to do any damage to the root structure. And we have enough room right now to bring vehicles in and and get access from the Jefferson. So I don't, I don't see that being a problem. If the board wanted to make that condition, I think we could certainly work with that.
Yeah, I I mean preferably through Jefferson rather than bring more traffic down Madison, as it's a small street already.
Yep.
Any questions uh for Mr. Keller from the board? Any questions from the audience for Mr. Keller regards his application? I do not see any. Any comments from the audience? Done. Um, then I will close the public portion of this hearing and are there any comments from board members?
I'll I'll go. Um, I mean, if there's ever a case for a C one hardship, I think that, you know, this is a great one. I mean, we have a lot that's almost an acre of property. Um, and there's literally no backyard, um because it's a flag lot. Um, I think that the applicant has done a wonderful job with the proposed landscaping. Um, and I could support the application.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just say I agree and not really much to add. I think Jessica did a fine job. Um.
I I too agree. Um, this is clearly a an unusual situation. Um, it's it's strictly an anomaly with the the lot having the two streets on both sides. It's clearly large enough to sustain this type of development uh as shown by the the variance requested. So I think the the landscape plan is very thoughtful. I too would um would support this application. Uh, not making condition of approval, but I think it would be nice to have the development come from the Jefferson side of the street. As opposed to bringing trucks down Madison Terrace. So with that, do I have anyone that would like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Who who made the motion? Is Jessica or Amy?
Jessica did. Steve's second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Torres?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Ray Platner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll be moving on to calendar thirty eight, forty eight, twenty one, uh Bhattacharya. Okay, so who do we have? Good evening. How are you?
Yes.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand, please. Whoever's going to testify. Swear, tell the truth, follow the truth, nothing but the truth, so have you gotten a matter of opinion?
I do.
Yes, thank you. Can we have your name, please, spell it?
Yes, I'm Anjali Katoch, A-N-J-A-L-I. Katoch, K-A-T-O-C-H.
Anyone?
Debraj Batacharia. My first name is spelled D-E-B-R-A-J. And the last name is B-H-A-T-T-A-C-H-A-R-Y-Y-A.
I'm Malati Anantakrishnan, architect. First name M-A-L-A-T-H-I. Last name A-N-A-N-T-H-A-K-R-I-S-H-N-A-N.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to start?
Yeah, I can go first, Craig. So first of all, thank you everybody for your time today and giving us this opportunity to present that case. Resident of the town, sorry, feel you're making a point.
Did you send the film?
I'm sorry, can you just speak a little more slowly, please?
Sure, yeah. So both Debraj and I have been residents of Melbourne for seven years now. And we moved into this house four years back. We absolutely love the neighborhood and the community. Daughters, one is a high school, 14 years old and the other is 10 years old. And four years back when we bought the house, both of them were of course younger. But now as they're growing big, our current house has three bedrooms, but it only has one bath. And that's going to be a big challenge for us to just have a daily, you know, work life balance when it comes to just daily chores between four of us and one bath. The house also has very limited closet space. Currently we use all types of solutions for closet space, including the linen closet, under bed storage and et cetera. The project here that we're proposing is just to extend a current third bedroom. It's an existing bedroom. The plan is to extend that to include another bath and a closet space to be provided there. Thank you again for giving this opportunity. And I think for details, I'll hand it to Malati, who's our architect.
Very well, could you please give us your qualifications?
Sure. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since 2002. After a bachelor's in architecture and a master's in urban planning from Virgin Etihad. My license is current and I have testified in numerous boards in central Jersey and in Melbourne, too.
Thank you. Your qualifications are accepted.
I'm going to share my screen. The first drawing here is the one that was submitted to the town. Noted Z1. As Anjali mentioned, they have a three bedroom house with one bathroom on the sec, both, all of it on the second floor. It is a Tudor style house, which means all the rooms are such that there are many of them are under the roof line. So I'd like to present two pages, which I have marked as exhibits A1 and A2. There are a series of photographs. On exhibit A1, the first photograph.
Excuse me, just, so in terms of A1, these are four photographs. Did you take those photographs?
Yes, these photographs were taken by the homeowner on Friday, the 21st.
Okay.
Okay, that's A1. And then I have a second page with four pictures, which is A2.
And when were those photos taken?
Again, taken on Friday, the 21st.
Okay, so let's go back to A1.
Okay. So on A1, the first photograph on the top left corner is the photograph from the corner of Ridge Terrace and Balto Stroll Way. You can see that it's a Tudor that's sitting quite close to Balto Stroll Way already. It's, it's only 11 feet from the property line. The next photograph to the right is the front of the house taken directly from Ridge Terrace, showing its Tudor characteristics. The one on the bottom left is the one taken from Balto Stroll Way from the driveway of the one car garage. And on this, I have marked the location of the addition. It will be an extension of the third bedroom, existing third bedroom over the existing first single story family room. And if you see the last photograph, which is a picture of the rear of the house. The goal is to extend this existing shed dormer and convert it into a regular gable. That would help us get the additional square footage and create full size height rooms. Which will have, you know, the master bedroom with the master bath and walk-in closet. And just for reference, on page exhibit A2, I show you how the existing bedrooms are. The first two bedrooms, there will be no change. But as you can see, there's very limited storage in those bedrooms. It's only the one at the end of the bedroom with the little closets below the bookshelves. So the goal is to create a master bedroom suite, which has another bathroom and a walk-in closet. Where my pointer is, that's where the master bedroom and walk-in closet is being provided. It's over the existing one story family room. The hardships that we are facing are, and the variances that we require for this project are too. The first point is that this is in an R6 zone with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. This property has 5,000, around 5,500 square feet, so it's slightly undersized. The second hardship is that it's a corner lot, so we need two front yard setbacks. And so the two variances we're looking for is one front yard setback from Balto Stroll Way. I mean, I tried to push the house as far back away from Balto Stroll as possible. Did not build over, you know, the one car garage here and create a fourth bedroom. Nor over this study area. But pushed it as far back as possible to create a, you know, not a large master bedroom, but a, you know, reasonable size 15 by 12 master bedroom. With a walk-in closet. So that's one variance. The second one is an FAR variance. The, we are at 38% requirement when 36% is allowed. On a lot of 5,500 square feet, that's only an additional 1,000, I'm sorry, 100 square feet. And the, and although we tried to reduce that and the way we did that was to not build over this one story section of the family room. It still gave us only a 12 by 15 master bedroom. Um. Basically, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have questions for either the homeowner or architect? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Hands raised. Anyone in the audience have any comments regarding this application? Then I will close the public portion of this application. Board members, let's say you.
Mr. Chairman, before we deliberate, if you just don't mind, just to remind the board that for purposes of this application, because it's an FAR variance, which is a form of a D variance. It requires five affirmative votes to get, to get an approval. And as you are aware, with regard to the, to the FAR variance or D4 variance. The focus is on whether the site will be able to accommodate any problems associated with the proposed use. But with a larger floor area than otherwise obviously permitted by the, by the ordinance. And so certainly that deals with special reasons under the positive criteria. And the typical negative criteria in terms of no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And no substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance or to the, or to the master. Thank you.
If you break these votes down separately as well, Rob?
Yeah, I would recommend that, yes.
Very good. So as I was saying, comments, anyone have any thoughts on this?
I'll start off. I mean. I, when I, when I went to visit this house, I was, I was a little concerned about the, the variance for the floor area ratio. But seeing the house, I think that it can, I think that it can handle it. And I've often said this in the past, that homes like this need to be modernized, you know, for, for today's living. And I think that, you know, a home for a family that has one, one bath is just simply not enough. And if this is really the only way that they can get it in. And, you know, I, I think that I could support the application. I'm not, I'm not as concerned about the front yard setback because they're building up, so nothing is really changing. I'd be curious to see what my, what my boardman, fellow board members think. But I, I think that it could handle the increase in the floor area ratio.
Thank you. Steve?
So yeah, I agree with, with Jessica. All things considered, the, the house needs the improvement. It's modest. I don't, you know, it's straight up, I don't see an impact. It's, it seemed to be a more efficient use of the empty space, frankly. I don't see a negative impact in any regards in any of the neighbors, so I could certainly support the application.
I would be supportive as well. I think it's, it's a modest increase and it's a thoughtful increase, given that it's facing two, two roads which are pretty close. And the lot size is smaller than normal for the already small R6 zone size. So from that perspective, I think it's been very careful and thoughtful increase in where the needs are met for the family. So clearly I could be supportive.
Thank you, Chandra. Wolfgang? Oh, you're muted, you're muted.
Sorry about that. The R6 lots can be kind of tricky when it comes to additions. And there's a lot of them that just can't, you know, undersized or not really can't support anymore, anymore bulking. But I think this is a bit of an exception, I think this is an exception. I was a little concerned when I was looking over the application, but when I went to see it actually in person, it didn't seem to be, it seems modest. You know, looking at it in person and I could support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looks like we lost Joe, so.
Oh Craig, I'll, I'll just add that I also think that the house could handle the extra 100 square feet, being that it's building up. And I don't really see any substantial detriment to the area or the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ashley. So quickly, you know, if this was a conforming lot, meaning 6,000 square feet, the FAR allowance would be 2160 in FAR square feet, which is 36% of the allowable 6,000 square feet. So if this was a conforming lot, this development as it currently is applied for would work at 20, 2,083 square feet. So I definitely see this as a C1 variance here as a hardship, as it's pertaining to the land itself. I think the lot can handle the massing and it would be acceptable for the D variance. So we're going to break this down into two separate votes. First will be for the D variance. And the second vote will be for the front yard setback, which I also don't have an issue with as it's, the lot is what it is. There's no way to change that. So that being the case, now, since Joe dropped off, that would mean that Chandra's voting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so Chandra will be voting as all, all one on this. So do I have a motion in the D variance for floor area ratio?
I move to approve the D variances.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
I could second.
Chandra with the second roll call.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Torres?
Yes.
Chandra Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Craig Plitner?
Yeah. Next, we have a front yard setback, C variance. Can I have a motion on that?
Move approval, the front yard setback.
Second.
Amy have the second?
Sure. A second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Torres?
Yes.
Chandra Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph, Craig Plitner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Next up and lastly, we have calendar 384921, located at 97 Oak U Terrace, Jonathan Sheehy.
Eileen, is Joe not in the audience?
No, he's not getting the attendings. So I don't know whether he, I don't know what happened. Maybe his system went down, I don't know. But he's not even.
Yeah, he's not lingering over there either. Let's see, we got Mr. Singer, we got Mr.
Please raise your right hand, whoever's going to testify. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so have you gotten a matter of opinion?
I do.
Okay, thank you. May we have your name and spell it, please?
My name is Golchera Abtahian. And last name is A-B-T-A-H-I-A-N.
Thank you. Mr. Singer?
Thomas Singer, the architect. I'm.
Yeah, just, just spell your name, please. Thank you.
Mr. Sheehy, should he be giving, Jonathan going to be testifying as well? Or just?
I think.
I can, but I think my wife.
Yeah.
So I'm Golchera, this is my husband Jonathan. First, thank you so much for your time. We moved here about a year and a half ago to Melbourne Township with our two kids, they're four and six. We've gotten to really love the neighborhood and our neighbors and we, we'd like to make this our forever home. So what we're seeking to do is to turn our third bedroom into our third and fourth bedroom. So that we can accommodate my mom.
Thank you. Mr. Singer, will you be next?
Yes.
Could you please give us your qualifications?
I'm an architect, registered in New Jersey since 1988. Also a planner since 2012. Graduated University of Pennsylvania with a degree, a master's in architecture. And presented before maybe a dozen boards in New Jersey.
And is your license for, what are you, are you going, how are you presenting tonight as a architect or planner or both?
Both.
Are your, are your licenses in good standing?
My license is good, are both in good standing.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Okay. I'd like to start with a deck of 26 images. I promise it won't be that long.
Have you previously submitted these?
No.
Okay. I will defer to Mr. Simon. As to how he would like those catalogued.
I will accept that deferment and I will say. I will accept that deferment and I will say that this is Mr. Singer, 26 slides.
Twenty six slides.
And you and you prepared this presentation A1, we're going to market?
Yes.
And and do we have a date for this presentation?
It would be today. Okay. The house is 97 Oak View Terrace. It's a small neighborhood off Woodland Road. Four streets, no, no exit other than Oak Hill Road. And these houses back up to the core heart churn operator. So we've got a big mountain basically behind these homes. This is the subject property. It's a big hill in the back. Two to the end of the road beyond this, you're at the Summit Medical Group and the future Chatham Road Development. And and there are three more, one on the corner facing the other way. The roads, based on Google's coordinates, it's 174 feet here. Once you get into the reservation at the highest clearing, I could find it was 290 feet. And there's about a 25 foot to 30 foot difference in elevation between the front and the back of the lot. As such. All of these houses were built in 19, around 1936. And they were built in this very narrow band, parallel to the hill. So that the the ground floors are flat, you've got about a nine foot climb to get into them. And then once you get to the back, there's a retaining wall that's about four to five feet tall. The four variances we're looking for are all related to this side yard. One's related to the front yard. There's a a front yard. I'll go through this in greater detail a little bit. A two side yards, side yard up to 18, side yard above 18 feet and the side yard combined. You'll notice none of these numbers change because nothing gets any worse. They're all within the existing footprint. So looking at the site. You've got the hill coming down to this retaining wall. Everything has a, all the houses along this road have about a a six foot setback here and about a seven foot setback to the house. Looking from Summit Medical back, you can see this this trough kind of continues all the way down. That that is the highest point and you're close to the roof level. The front of the house, it's about nine feet up. The driveways are generally ungrade. And and they're sighted in such a way that that you can just make it in reasonable distance to get to the front door.
Mr. Singer, let me interrupt you just for one second. You're now showing a colored rendering of what is this, the existing condition or proposed condition?
This is the existing condition.
Okay, and in terms of this rendering and any future rendering that you're going to be showing as part of this 26 slide presentation. Did you create this rendering or did you have it created under your supervision?
I created these this rendering, but these renderings generated the drawings that you had before.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the existing condition. Didn't mean to do that. This is what we're proposing to add. It's the final view of the outside of the house. So we're it's five foot six of height that we're adding to the top of the roof on the left. This is the single bedroom that Goli was just talking about. We stay within the the footprint of the building, raise the roof a little bit and we get to the two rooms. Sure, about 10 feet. Why? That bring that that represents about 128 square feet at six foot six. So that is our zoning limit and and our zone and the total gross area of the house is 2195 square feet. So these are, these are the setbacks. I'm going to go through them now. So 40 foot setback cuts the building in half. However, all these houses are lined up. That's just the mass and the 5.4 feet of height that the front yard setback would generate. We did do a a measurement of all the front yards. This house, the front setback is 25.20 based on the survey. The average is 23.30. So the front yard setback line is sitting completely in front of the house. The right side setback up to 18 feet is one foot two from the property line because the property line is six foot eight. Because of the plinth and and the fact that everything's built up to the front door. The the ground elevation, the average ground elevation is only 2.29 feet below the ground floor level. So this adds up to these two little triangular areas. Then if we consider the the height of setback lane, that's 3.8 feet from the edge of the house, which is an additional 1.6 feet of setback. And that's the side yard combined. So we're starting at this side of the house. We're going 35% of lot width and that ends up 6.3 feet. A couple of aspects of the site is if we string a a line between the two neighboring properties and through the current, to the roof of this one. Basically, it's the shortest house on the street. That was a Google Earth photograph. I tried taking one with the regular camera from the other direction and you get the same, so. From a zoning standpoint. Certainly C ones in terms of hardships. The change in elevation between the front and back is a major issue. The fact that all these houses in this row are are built on a plinth. That's basically, the houses are all in the neighborhood of 25 feet deep. In order to to get substantial size, they almost all of them exceed the the width and the side yard setbacks. And there's really no place to go forward or backward. Because of the slow, because of this sort of neighborhood feature. And the height of the front yard. So our proposal to build on the second floor was intention, our intention was to make this fit with the rest of the neighborhood, both logically and visually. That was C1B, which was the shape of the lot. This is C1C, which is structures lawfully existing there on. We are simply building on top of the existing lot. So the front yard is unavailable and would be inappropriate because we change the average on the street and and break up the street wall. The sides are are minimal to begin with and the back. You have this large difference in elevation and in order to get a house high enough to connect to the second floor, it would be on stilts. It would obstruct the neighbor's views and you've got the arboretum behind, which would be staring at this pavilion sitting out there. And on the C2 side. The purpose is zoning, it advances C, providing adequate air, light and open space. By not building additional house, it it minimizes the amount of built area. To the right is north and well, the shadows cast by this would be on the on the property itself. It promoted the visual environment. I feel like we're following the 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 basic constructs of the street in terms of the formation of the house, the appearance. The makes good use of the inland because it's not absorbing anymore. It is the area was built. The arboretum was built in 1933. This house was built in 1936. There was a a whole sort of community built around that time that that followed these rules. And to promote the most to promote recycling whenever you're doing an addition, and this is a fairly small one. You're going to keep a lot of solid waste out of the waste stream. Because you're not demolishing house. And lastly. These are the shadow diagrams. That's nine o'clock. September 1st and that's three o'clock in the afternoon on September 1st. So the shadows for within the lot, this is the side of the house that has the addition. So the well, the the sun hole doesn't affect the property to the left and the rest of the house would have already shielded the property to the right. So relief can be, relief can't be granted without substantial detriments, the without determining that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. And they want to impact the zone plan and zoning ordinance. We've kept this as as minimal and as low profile as possible. The proposal doesn't change any of the floor area standards, the zoning, floor area, the lot coverage, the building coverage, oiler, oiler within the standards and all the setbacks that we're asking for variances on won't actually change the numbers, but they will affect the cubic. So we feel this application is based on specific and extraordinary aspects of the applicant's property. It also respects the development pattern of the neighborhood while maintaining greater street setback and lower street profile. The approvals requested reinforce the township's master plan intend to protect the character of established neighborhoods. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. You can stop your screen share. Any questions from the board or Mr. Singer? Any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? And then I will close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, your thoughts? Anyone?
Yeah, I'll go. And looking at the property, I mean, it obviously is not increasing any of the existing, you know, nonconformities. I guess I'm not, I'm not really crazy about the design. I don't like how it looks. I think it looks just kind of bulky and I don't think it's a I don't think it's great from that aspect, but on the other hand, I don't know that that's my aesthetic reason, my aesthetic tastes are necessarily a reason to 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 deny that, though.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, you know, it's interesting, yeah, based on the house location, you know, it's up on a hill. I was most concerned about the impact on neighbors and I really couldn't identify one. You know, standing down on on the sidewalk, if you if you're looking from the left side of the house up, or I guess that might be the south side of the house. I I honestly don't even know that any neighbors would even appreciate that an addition has been done after it's been there for, you know, for a few months or something like that. So I do agree with Wolfgang about the design being kind of, you know, a little bulky. But but I think I can support the application as it's as it's requested, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I I had similar concerns about the bulkiness of the house, but when I was standing on the street looking at neighboring houses, there are quite a few with similar roof lines and bulk. And so I think, you know, I could support it as well.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? So I think the bulk sort of speaks to the fact that really the only one variance here that's kind of new would be the side yard setback above 18 feet because it doesn't exist on that side of the house. So that would lend itself to this bulk issue that everyone's talking about. But I think the alternative is if you start stepping it in in order to alleviate that, it would probably be even more odd, it would be odd looking as opposed to the squareness of it. So I don't really have an issue either with having it masked the way it is. I would, I would support the application.
Jessica, I think you want to.
Sorry, I didn't realize. No, it's it's okay. I didn't. I didn't realize that I was muted, but yeah, I could support it as well under the C1.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
I'll second.
There we go.
Is that Steve?
Steve, Steve motion, Jessica on the second.
Now, I did bring Joe over, but honestly, I don't know if he heard also, would I be okay?
I would rec, I'd recommend that that Joe not participate in the vote because I don't know if he's he caught the beginning of it. I didn't see.
Okay.
So so Chandra's up.
Okay. Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Chandra Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glat?
Yes.
Craig Plitner?
Yes. Lastly, is there anything anyone in the audience would like to discuss that is not on the agenda for this evening? I do not see any hands raised. So in that case, do I have an emotion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night, guys.
Good night.
Right. Good night. Welcome back, Joe. Goodbye.
Hi, Jess. Hi, Jess. Good night.
Eileen.
We'll have lunch. I'll visit you in North Carolina. Okay. What's up, Joe?
The plug came out again, and I couldn't figure out how to put it in and the battery died.
What, what, what died?
The battery.
On what? Oh, you're not plugged in.
At my, on my laptop. I didn't have it. The plug came, the wire came out. I had it on, I had it plugged into an electric outlet. But I didn't know where to put the wire back in. There were lots of different places. I finally got it back, but I gotta ask you a question. Did they get the uh, the uh five votes they needed?
Yes.
On the uh application prior to this one?
Yes, they did. Was it, was unanimous.
Good.
Okay.
All right, that was a good application. This one, I'm glad I didn't vote, because I probably.
I know. All right, Joe, you have a good night.
You too.
Okay, bye-bye.
See ya.